All right, I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg.
President.
Counselor Hassan.
Here.
Counselor Mitchell.
Here.
Counselor Sansusi.
Here.
Counselor Tivnan.
Here.
Mayor Beatty.
Here. Okay, uh, let's see, Roy, did he get off the link?
You mean, uh, Counselor Kimmy? Sorry, go ahead.
Yep. I'm sorry, Edward.
Time zone change.
He's coming back in.
There he is.
Okay, well, tonight, we're going to start in with the swearing of our newly elected city counselor. And then we're going to move into an executive session and then move in the agenda. Tonight's agenda is going to be packed. So I just want, like, now we have a seventh member joining us, so just thinking for council making our comments concise so we can move through. I mean, we have three public hearings on top of our work sessions and two executive sessions tonight. So with that, I'm going to ask our awesome Judge Britton to conduct the swearing in of Counselor-elect Kimmy.
Thank you, Mayor. Please raise your right hand, Dr. Kimmy. I, Edward Kimmy.
I, Edward Kimmy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold and support.
That I will uphold and support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of United States of America.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Beaverton.
And the Charter and ordinances of City of Beaverton.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And I will safely perform.
The duties of city counselor.
With the duties of the city counselor.
In and for the City of Beaverton.
In and for the City of Beaverton.
To the very best of my ability.
To the very best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, well, welcome to the team, Counselor Kimmy. Buckle up because your first meeting out of the gate is a good one to be at. All right, with that, I'm going to move us into executive session in accordance with O R S 192.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry out labor negotiations pursuant to O R S 192.6604. It is the city council's requirement that these items not be discussed or disclosed by media representatives. Action is expected following the executive session, so we will be back with you. And I do believe we do have a separate meeting for the executive session. So if you go back into your calendar invite, you can find the executive session. We'll meet you there and we'll be back on this one. Thank you, Judge Britton, for joining us. Regarding the topic we discussed in executive session.
Yes, members of council, I'll be happy to move that the city council authorize the city manager and the interim police chief to sign the collective bargaining agreement that has been negotiated between the City of Beaverton and the Beaverton Police Association and which is effective through June 30th, 2025.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by council president and seconded by Counselor Mitchell. Is there any discussion on the motion?
No, I just want to call out Nadia is still not promoted to panelist. Counselor Hassan, I'm sorry.
See, I thought I counted him right. Okay, perfect. Counselor Hassan, do you have any comments on the moved agenda? Okay. Will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg.
Yes.
Counselor Hassan.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell.
Yes.
Counselor Sansusi.
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
And Counselor Kimmy.
Yes.
There it is, the first vote.
It's an easy one. It's going to get harder. Okay, all right, so we are on to a public comment portion of our evening. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes into input, or takes into input what the community is saying. However, in order to comply with Oregon Open Meeting laws, this is not a time for dialogue, rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city manager and recorder are taking notes if action is needed. I do see that we have a couple people ready to go for public comment. Monica, when you are ready to go, you will have three minutes to address the council.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Good evening, and thank you so much for having me here. I am here on behalf of the Diversity Advisory Board talking about the Beaverton Multicultural Center. We are having this project in our agenda for this year. And the reason we want to have this is because we really feel that we need a multicultural center for many reasons because the community is so diverse. The community needs a place to come when they need any information or any, any kind of needs for everybody at the, at the City of Beaverton exclusively. We feel, yesterday when we were on the walk for the refugees, we hear so many stories and the more that I hear, the more we understand the need for this community center. I would love to see this coming true as the call board wants to. We need this to help people, any, anybody, any, any residents of Beaverton who needs help with maybe information about the police, information about where they can find help or when they need for the family. We have refugees, we have immigrants that sometimes get in trouble because they don't know how to behave here in this society. So if we could guide them, the government, I feel, we feel that it will help to the city government because they will have data information about many of the needs for the community. So we are asking to please work with us on this and see if we can create this multicultural community center. It is for, we have talked about experiences that people has or in my case, for instance, I've worked with families that come from different countries and I know what they go through. And I, I really feel this is such a great project that we would like to have and that we the DAB would like to be included in some conversations if you have about this to form and create and to just help the community. I'm so proud, I'm so happy being part of this because I believe so strongly in the city because the city has done so much. And I think this will be another thing for us to have. And I really thank you very much for the time you gave me. That, this is all what I have to say right now. Thank you.
And with 15 seconds to spare, thanks for joining us tonight. Our next speaker will be Nicole.
Okay, can you hear me now?
You can.
Okay, terrific. And is there a way to turn on the camera or?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, it's just audio.
Oh, that's completely fine. Okay, um, so.
Seems like we lost her. Did they share talking privileges be taken?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, I totally apologize. I don't know exactly what you're inspired. Um, but, all right, so this is about the correct new way of eating, changing our diet. And it's by myself, Nicole Orji Sheldon Dunson, and it's Reasons to Not Eat Animal and Vertebrate Products. And so slaughtering, selling, and eating dead animals and vertebrates will show mammals, birds, reptiles, fish, insects, and amphibians as a tyranny cruel and reasonable autocratic that's taking no account of other precious life wishes or opinions and is failing to protect their innocent life, which is completely despot as a dictator. This is injustice to nature, society, and most importantly, to all animals and vertebrates that are not humans. We should not be okay with animals and vertebrates being hunted or raised in farms and taken care of them until they later be slaughtered and butchered so that their dead flesh can be sold to grocery stores, restaurants, or to be prepared at home to be cooked and eaten for conception. These animals and vertebrates have lives and have a right to live without hunters, farmers, and producers coming along to kill and murder them to be clothed for items or meals for food, especially when we have a miraculous, wonderful vegan plant-based foods that taste spectacular when grown the correct way as well as fashionable clothing. These are detested situations occurring amongst us that must be stopped immediately to preserve the livelihood of these animals and vertebrates reaching their full life ages. This norm in our society of preparing animals and vertebrates for consumption should be outlawed and banned by every big and small corporation and businesses in the United States of America. And every country should do the same and stop these murderers. I mean, imagine if we were taking care of children as well as adults, telling them we love them, feeding them, sheltering them, spending time with them, taking pictures, videos for innocent, happy memories, to only later slaughter, murder, and kill them to be fed to serve society for meal consumption or to make clothing. I mean, would you honestly be okay with your children, family, or friends being slaughtered, hunted, and killed to be served as foods, clothes, to be covered or kept warm? We have a huge variety of vegan plant-based food to eat as well as fashionable clothing? Uh-uh. Too many years have passed by without correction, protection, and guidance with innocent direction. You need to properly abolish these loathsome horrific laws by stop slaughtering, selling, and eating animal and vertebrate products and place an emergency effective ordinance that gets passed immediately. Turn over to vegan and all-natural foods, tensions and stress will lift off of a society as a whole. The health of the people will extend and heal in ways that we don't even comprehend. Diseases will not get passed from one generation to the next, and life expectancy will be longer for the people, animals, and vertebrates. The new restaurant laws need to be based on mindfulness, on how to care and prepare to serve the vegan and plant-based food. We have to care about all the living species, and there needs to be some gut instinct feeling with the common sense knowing to not murder any animal, vertebrates, or humans. You are not supposed to eat human animals and vertebrates, and there must be an ultimate penalty in precedence in attempting to or actually doing these very inhumane, wrong, evil things. We must create a conversation that doesn't fall on deaf ears but caters to the steps that can be taken to a new set of directions for selecting the right foods when a masses can follow and be encouraged to eat vegan. The human body is intended to function on plant-based foods that are full of fiber, antioxidants, unsaturated fat, essential fatty acids, vital chemicals, cholesterol-free protein. This matter is overlooked by us humans because it's a habit by civilization. So therefore, we must grind out all the belief system that we need dead animals and vertebrate products so we don't kill the animals and vertebrates in the first place. None of my time speaking with y'all is nearing the end. I'd like to just say lastly that instruction and path needs to be taken seriously. The whole topic about saving the animals and vertebrates is awe to some and rather frowned upon, but we can counsel each other and the correct way of understanding and how to move forward. Slaughtering should not be frowned upon instead since the taking of another life is completely wrong. Changing our whole country's diets is what the movement has to be about as well as saving lives. We are too intelligent as a whole, and every life has so much to offer this world that we live in, which we call Earth. It is a must that we come together and spread innocent uplifting unity rapidly across the globe. I provided written information with solutions to solve this problem that we are facing as society on how to move forward. But unfortunately, I only have a few minutes to speak and I will have to continue this night on a later date. But I thank our city council members, Lacey, Ashley, Laura, Allison, Mark, Nadia, and I believe it's Dr. Edward that's filling in for taking the time to read Ian Shelton's written testimony as well as protecting and serving our communities and giving us opportunity to speak today about this emergency situation. Thanks.
Thank you. Yep, thank you for joining us this evening. Okay, our next speaker is Manajay. You will have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you so much. Hello, Salam, Druut, Bonjour. Anion, Gahasi, Bastio, Nihaa, Coni, Conitio. Privet, Privet with another spelling. And so many different words for hello. These are just a few that I know. And so that shows why we need Beaverton. Beaverton, it's a very multicultural center. And first, after this introduction, I wanted to say hello again to all of you and thank you for giving me the chance. Thank you, Mayor Beatty, our city counselors, and especially the alumnus, Dr. Kimmy. Thank you for giving me the time to advocate for Beaverton's own multicultural center. As we all know, Beaverton is a welcoming city. We pride ourselves on our diversity and we recognize that this is how we drive our strength. In Beaverton, almost one in four residents were born outside of the United States. And one in three people living in the city identify as a person of color. Multicultural centers are spaces to share, learn, and grow with one another and celebrate our differences. To provide a few examples, the closest to my, to home for me is watching and working with my daughter throughout her educational journey. When my daughter was at Portland Community College, we used the multicultural center there to organize the first no-rules Persian New Year event at the college. When she went to Pacific University, she started a Muslim Student Association. And years later, the multicultural center they opened now serves a play as a place for Muslims and all other students of faith they can worship in. At Western University, her medical school, as president for white coats for black lives, she helped start a diversity, equity, and inclusion center which serves as a space for BIPOC students to hang out and houses valuable resources about anti-racism and allyship for all to learn from, among other things. Multicultural, multicultural centers are a powerhouse that emphasize the messages, message that Beaverton cares about diversity, it cares about celebrating culture, and it cares about all of its residents. At the end, I'm positive we all believe our beautiful Beaverton needs its very own multicultural center. Thank you again and have a good evening.
Thank you for joining us and hello in Greek is Shenetay. So thank you for joining us today. Ahmed, are you ready to join us, friend? You have three minutes to address the council.
Yes, I will not take three minutes. My name is Ahmed Zabedi. I'm the chair for the DAB. Thank you so much for having us and have this opportunity. I came here today to support the multicultural center. I think it's a priority, not just for me, for many community leader and for DAB this year. So please, please, we need this like so bad. And I know there is like, I speak even with the mayor about it, and she told me like, we need to have definition about this. We need to know what's the specific need for the multicultural center. And honestly, as a community leader for Muslims and Arabic-speaking community, I think it's a huge need. It's a, it's a, not just a place to gather because we can do that in any, maybe in any park, but it's a, it's a some, like, it's a place we can reach when we have huge need. It's a, will be a resource, will be a place for gathering, will be a place to, to do our like multicultural things, to do our heritage, to practice maybe even our language learning. So please, please, like, it's a huge need. We need it so bad. And I'm, I'm honestly, I'm waiting for this. I'm, I'm in Beaverton for seven years and half of this seven years I was waiting to have multicultural center. Honestly, because again, it's a huge need and we need it. And I will support any plan, anything, if we need us to help with, like with the art center, we will be jumped in. It's a, it's something I dream of it and I think let's make this dream come true, not just have it as a dream. Thank you so much and I don't want to waste your time. Thank you.
Never a waste. Thank you for joining us this evening. Do we have anyone else that wants to address the council tonight? All right, we are on to council items. Oh, do we have more people? All right.
Yes, we have, sorry, Mayor, we do have more people for visitor comment.
Okay. Ramen, you have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Beatty, city counselors. As a resident of forty-plus year that I have spent in Beaverton, talking to people to, to the community. The feedback that I am getting is that there is a dire need for a community center for Beaverton. We want to be proud of having our own community center rather than one that may be for the county. We want, we want to have a Beaverton community center where people can utilize the center for numerous different needs. We also feel that that will help bring all different communities together and hold different functions, celebrations. For example, Eid or Diwali or Christmas. We need to have that place and it will also be helpful for the youths to organize their functions and, and things like that. So there is a need for Beaverton Community Center. We all, it would also promote not only religious festivals for, but cultural cultural programs. Maybe somebody might volunteer to teach music or arts and things like that. So it is imperative that we we really think deeply about this project. And as far as Deb goes, this is one of the things, one of the goals that we want to work on this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Cheryl, you have three minutes to address the council.
Yes, is this the right time for the housing options project?
Not if you're here to testify in the public meeting. Or I mean, not if you're here for the, yeah, public meeting. We'll have you back.
Oh, what time is that?
It's much later in the agenda, the public hearing.
Okay.
I can't type the specific time. It's near. Hmm, prob, well, it's going to be our first public hearing, so probably another 15 minutes.
Okay, all right, so just stay on, just continue watching. Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay, with that, we are on to city council items. Any city council items? Mr. Sansusi? Sorry, Counselor Sansusi?
Yeah, I suppose I could, could save this for council new business, but since that may be after midnight tonight, I'm going to do this now. I have informed members of the, members of the city council, the city manager, and the city attorney, and a few other folks that my term is ending at the end of this year officially, courtesy of the term limits that are built into our new charter. But because of some personal circumstances and opportunities that I've been working towards for a number of years for, after my council work, I will be leaving my post here in city council position five at the end of August. So effective at the end of August 31st. Mr. Kirby will be informing the council about all the legalities associated with next steps and procedural matters. But I just wanted to make sure that members of the public who have not yet heard now know that I will be leaving the city council four months early.
Well, I don't know. Do we get a vote in this? Okay. Uh, thank you for all your years of service to the, the council. And we got a couple months to get some of those transportation things over the line, so I look forward to working with you on that. Counselor Hassan?
I'm still processing that information, so I'm going to reserve comment for Counselor Sansusi. I know we have a packed night, but I wanted to make two callouts. I know Jenny is potentially working on ways for us to provide updates to each other, but I did get to attend the volunteer fair that B C C I put on. For those of you who are listening, that's the Beaverton Committee for Community Involvement. Amazing fair. We had, I think, over 500 people come through at the Beaverton City Library. Just so much really positive energy around volunteering and getting involved. And then I wanted to make sure I took a moment to recognize staff and community who showed up yesterday at the World Refugee Day Walk. It was an incredible walk. My feet are aching, but it was just so nice to see community folks and especially staff who helped put it together and then a community and DAB that, that were able to execute it. So thank you so much to those folks.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yeah, thank you. Really quickly, I wish I could have attended that walk yesterday. I've heard nothing but wonderful things about it. I, I wanted to just take a moment to thank you, Counselor Sansusi. I'm still processing this news as well. I've heard you mention several times your files. Like, I think I remember writing this down nine years ago and you magically pull it out of a file. So I'm hoping that at some point, this wealth of information that you've accumulated finds its way back to us because there's a lot of great institutional knowledge there that leaves when you leave. So thank you for your contribution to the city, but also just for always being so good at remembering context, which has helped inform so many of our conversations.
See, how you feel after you actually see the list? But thank you.
Okay, with that, consent agenda, Council President.
Okay, and like everything else on this agenda, this one's not short. I'll move that we approve the consent agenda consisting of Agenda Bill 22149, a liquor license new outlet, Choza, 22150, Resolution Number 4796, a resolution expressing the City of Beaverton's election to receive distribution of a share of certain revenues of the state of Oregon for fiscal year 2022 to 2023 pursuant to O R S 221.770. 22151 is a Resolution Number 4797, a resolution stating the official results of the May 17th, 2022 primary elections. Congratulations, Counselor Kimmy. 22153, Resolution Number 4799, a resolution approving the annual flying of the Juneteenth flag. Excuse me. 22152, Resolution Number 4798, a resolution approving the Excuse me, two two one five two, resolution number four seven nine eight, a resolution approving the annual flying of the pride flag. Two two one five four, authorize the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with cooperative public agencies of Washington County for equipment and services. Two two one five five, classification and compensation recommendations for fiscal year twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three, including new classification in finance department, salary real- reallocations in the police department, and the cost of living allowance and paid parental leave for nonrepresented management employees. Two two one five six, ratify the mayor's signature on an intergovernmental agreement for digital forensics services as part of the Washington County Digital Forensics Laboratory within Washington County and authorize the city manager to sign similar future IGAs with Washington County and the city of Beaverton for digital forensic services if approved as to form by the city attorney. Two two one five seven, fleet partner participation agreement signature authorization for EV infrastructure. Two two one five eight, approve first amendment to the promissory note between city Beaverton and Reach Beaverton Limited Partnership for the Mary Ann Housing Project. And as the contract review board, two two one five nine, a contract award for ADA curb ramp retrofit upgrade project. And two two one six oh, contract amendment to authorize government relations services with Baldwin Consulting LLC and increase the contract amount.
Sir, second?
Second.
One seconded by councillor Hassan. Any discussion on tonight's motion? Councillor Hartmire Prigg?
Thank you, Mayor. Um I just want to acknowledge that tucked into our consent agenda is our two resolutions that we requested um at our last meeting in recognition and commitment to find the pride flag and the Juneteenth flag. Um so I just want to thank you all for agreeing to that. I think it's a really important message to our community to show our commitment to them. So thank you so much um for for getting that together so quickly, city manager and staff, and to council for being supportive.
Any other comments to make? All right, will the recorder call it roll?
Councillor Hartmire Prigg?
Yes.
Councillor Hassan?
Yes.
Councillor Mitchell?
Yes.
Councillor Sansucci?
Yes.
Councillor Tivnan?
Yes.
Councillor Kimmy?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes. Awesome. All right, we have two presentations this evening. The first presentation, Agenda Bill two two one six one, Metro's twenty twenty two quarterly update by Metro councillors Rosenthal and Carlos Gonzalez. Uh thank you, gentlemen, for joining us. You are joining us on our busiest council meeting of the year. So uh we love you, but brevity is key.
Thank you so much, Mayor, uh council and community members. I'll make sure I get this started super quick and I'm here with a councillor Rosenthal and I'll I'll hand it off to him uh in a second. And for the record, my name is Carlos Gonzalez. I represent northern wa- northern, north and western Washington County uh and northern parts of Beaverton as your district four councillor. We really appreciate all the time that you've given to Metro um and are giving to Metro as we work on regional issues together. And uh we recognize you have a tight agenda, so I'm gonna pass it on to councillor Rosenthal and we're gonna try and really race race through this.
Thank you, councillor Gonzalez. I'll race through this. Uh Garrett Rosenthal, District Three, which includes sort of the central and southern parts of Beaverton, as well as a bunch of other cities, you know, Tiger, your neighbor, and uh several others. So if we can move on straight away to the next slide. It it basically, it's good to see if you see all of you this evening. I wish we were doing it in person, but uh hopefully that'll happen in the not distant future. This slide is just meant to send the tone. Our problems are real, our progress are real. Some people may say, well, why isn't it happening faster? And that there's a lot of complicated reasons for that, but we are making progress. Um and that hopefully we'll document some of this and you might have a couple of questions. Next slide, please. All right, uh real progress. Keep in mind, there's a lot of numbers out there and they're not all the same and and don't to get too confused and they're changing all the time. So we placed seven hundred and forty eight people in supportive housing. We have the twenty five, over twenty five hundred houses receiving regional rental assistance, uh seven hundred new uh fund funded shelter beds, and that's just for a start. So um the numbers are changing every month as we got rolling. Remember, we didn't get start the program until about a year ago and then we didn't really start getting substantial funding and people had to boot up, so um it's it's making progress. Um. Yeah, uh next slide. This is this is Lonnie. He's a it's a typical example. Met him on Thanksgiving. He had he was sort of down. He had had a loss in the family. Um he'd been sleeping in his car and he got into a shelter and then he got into a a housing situation and he got support from a caseworker. And now he's doing better. He has a job and uh this is the kind of thing. He was at the Arbor Lodge Winter Shelter. We, you know, we boosted up and we had winter shelters for a lot of people last last winter and we will have more this time. Washington County has is is exceeding its target in terms of permanent shelters for people, so that's really good to hear. Uh next slide, please. Metro's housing bond. Um this is since the text that I had, it was a hundred and eighty. There's two hundred and seventeen affordable houses open. We had originally promised thirty nine hundred. Right now, we have twenty eight hundred uh well, twenty eight hundred plus two hundred and seventeen, so three thousand. That's about eighty percent. We're eighty percent of the goal and we've only spent about fifty five, sixty percent of the money. So we are hoping that this is gonna mean twelve thousand people will have affordable homes. And this does not include the work, some of the work that some of the other agencies are particularly in the city of Portland. It does not include, for example, the Safe Rest Safe Rest Villages with Portland is opening. So this is going on throughout the region. It's um, you know, there's a lot of stuff happening. Um and I just want to mention, for example, in terms of the housing bond, next week, I'm there's two housing houses in your area. I'm going to a groundbreaking for the Wish Camper, which is out on Scholz Ferry Road near the high school. And then also there's the actual grand opening, which taking taking tenants, but it's another one in Tiger. It's uh on the seventy second. It's called Viewfinder. So that's just next week. Next slide, please. Uh this gives an idea. This is probably a little bit out of date because there's probably more projects going on than this post-construction, under-construction and complete. Um there there's, I think there's probably five or six that are complete at this point in time. You all know about the Mary Ann, which was one of the two first ones. And I, you know, I I was there at that grand opening and I hope it's doing well, but I I'd love to have a response or a report on that. Next slide, please. Providing support. This is but the big thing that's taken a lot of time and and I'm sure you know that a lot of the support, particularly supportive housing with addiction recovery, regional coordination, it it has taken time, particularly at the tail end of the pandemic, to hire people, to get them on board, to get the money to pay for them. The counties pretty much loaned themselves money in the gap, but it still took time to get people in. And as you know, almost everybody is short-staffed these days. So it's building up. It's not as fast as we would like. There's a lot more work to do, but it is happening. And so we have people with addiction recovery. We have outreach staff. Um we and we have pretty much a consistent approach throughout the region and we're gonna have consistent data, so we'll be able to judge the progress. Probably about uh six months from now. Next slide, please. Now, as you all know, waste disposal is a big issue around the thing. And as you know, that we have a rid patrol. Now, rid patrol doesn't go into occupied sites, but after sites are occupied. So we've had, we bumped up our rid patrol crews. We've been collecting about three hundred, three and a half tons a day, something like that. We now have about a thousand tons of trash in the last twelve months, mostly in the last six months. We have some cooperative agreements. Um we narrow down to about a two, a three-day average response time. I have actually myself seen places in the city of Portland. It's a work in progress, but it is making progress and we got recently more money from the state, partly because of the track and field session to spend more money particularly on thoroughfares to make sure that these are cleaned up. That would be like ninety nine and I five and eighty four and so forth because there's gonna be a lot of people coming into the state. Um so that it it's it's there is success is starting to show. Um and we're not the only ones that are doing it. The city and and the state are also doing portions of it, but that's just one element. Next slide, please. This is an interesting slide. This shows the various kinds of calls and I'm not gonna go through all the different colors. Some of them are 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 calls where we've responded. Some are calls that are still online. Some of them are calls that um that were taken taken care of. I I had the key, but I don't have it with me, but it does show you that we have a lot of responses. Obviously, they're focused in the in the metropolitan area because that's where the biggest problems are, but we have all the way out to in Washington County, all the way out to Forest Grove and certainly in Beaverton. And I would say, don't hesitate. If you see a place, call, call our rid patrol and get them on board and uh don't don't hesitate to try and get them involved if if you have a cleanup need. Next slide, please. Uh transportation ties us together. Boy, I could spend all day on this slide. I I forget which number this is. Let's see. Oh, yeah. County Partners, uh the 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 Food West. I I'm wondering, is it, are we, what's what number of slide? I don't have any notes on this one.
I think this one's for me, councillor Rosenthal.
All right, all right.
Great. I I'll I'll try and take it from here, but.
Phone with friend, you're.
Yeah, phone a friend, phone a friend. Thanks, councillor. Appreciate you.
Okay, yeah, need help here.
No, you're absolutely. You're good. Uh can uh Beaverton Council, we're currently in the process of updating the regional transportation plan, which sets the twenty five year vision uh for our region's transportation system, whole bunch of policies, projects of all kinds, all sizes. Um and you know, thanks to the participation of your staff and uh we're we're able to really work on that. Um I'm happy to share that uh we're also in the process of uh the regional flexible fund allocation process and every three years we get, we get to allocate federal funding. Uh the call for proposals ended in December and we received over a hundred million dollars in proposals for about forty million dollars of funding, which you know, is not anything new for transportation. We know that we always have more projects than we have uh decisions and we're we're actively working on on creating a slate of projects uh that we can make a decision on. There's a whole bunch of other really great initiatives happening locally, like the TV Highway Project, uh which uh thank you councillor Hartmire Prigg for serving on that committee and uh to save time, I'll move on to the next slide. Uh I want to talk about our venues uh real quick. Uh you know, the bottom line is that the venues uh uh over the last few years really did uh suffer uh, you know, economically uh a lot during the pandemic. Um but even then, you know, the venues were able to uh step up and do a lot of different things. I mean, if you remember at the start of the pandemic and as vaccinate, as vaccines were rolling out, the convention center was the state's largest vaccination clinic. We just celebrated a hundred years of the Portland Expo Center. You know, uh we're we're continuing to bring shows back to the P five. Uh the Oregon Zoo Ba- the Oregon Zoo successfully completed uh the region-approved Zoo Bond, a hundred twenty five million dollars of projects. Uh and in general, the venues are starting to recover uh in that V-shaped recovery curve that we've seen uh across uh across different sectors. Next slide. You know, something really near and dear to my heart is that last Friday uh Metro was able to officially uh you know, open Shahealem Ridge Nature Park, which is uh uh near Gaston and Forest Grove uh and with funding from the two thousand and six and tw- and twenty nineteen Parks and Nature Bond measures. Is a huge occasion, a huge moment of continuing to celebrate more investment in green spaces on the west side uh and something that I'm hoping that we can continue to do. Uh we're also uh currently working on uh in building support for a renewal for Metro's Parks and Nature Levy. Uh and what the council is currently working on with community members is making sure that we continue that important line of work without raising taxes, making sure that we uh embed equity and climate as key driving forces in those tax revenues and the way that we reinvest them uh in the in in the community. The current levy is set to expire in twenty twenty three, so you know, uh we 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 need to move on that pretty quickly and and uh I'd love to talk with you more. If you have questions about it, you know, please feel free to reach out to me directly. Next slide. You know, and on that note, um I will say as well that the that the levy has delivered real benefits to nature and communities. You know, it it's the it's the source of funding. Um you know, as you know, a bond is to acquire capital, to build things. There's there's a lot of rules around what you can spend bond dollars on. The the levy dollars help us do the education, the maintenance um of these park sites. Um and uh you know, especially here on the west side, um it's helped us invest in community partnerships. Uh it's what supports our co-management of Coop- Cooper Mountain Nature Park with THPRD. Um and uh an important number is that just over two dollars a month for the homeowner of an assessed value at two hundred fifty thousand dollars. The levy's uh proven to be uh popular, affordable, and a meaningful benefit. And again, uh you know, we're we're looking to receive support from the voters and uh you know, it's five years and we need to renew that uh every five years. Next slide. You know, and with that, you know, I think we'll we'll go ahead and wrap up here. Councillor Rosen- Rosenthal and I are super grateful for the time. Uh and I hope that, you know, in this snapshot of Metro Council presentation, we gave you some good information and you know what? Maybe we should keep doing them like this because I feel like it was it was kind of fun. Thanks.
I appreciate the fireside chat tonight. I do want both of you to know that I sat in on a session today here at the Department of Labor with uh your very own Andrew or Andre Biller. He was talking about your workforce development pathways program. And people were super excited to hear about the great work you guys are doing and the trades work and and that stuff. So your staff represented you well today here in DC. We also have a place for your forty percent extra money in that housing. Um so we will, we have another project right in the pipe. Beaverton does it fast and quick. And if you guys want another, you know, trophy, we're gonna help you deliver it. Um so I just want to say thank you for all the work that you guys are doing for us. My last pitch to you is when I saw that map about waste, it is not just a pet- a Portland problem. We have immense problem here in the city with that. We submitted a request to you guys a couple of weeks ago, so if you haven't seen it, I'd be happy to send it over to you. We have a dynamite plan for removing waste right here in our own community. We think we'll help you reach the goals the governor asked you to do when she gave you that money. We want to partner with you. We're ready to roll up our hard work and don't let those dots on that map confuse you. There is waste here that we need to address and we desperately need Metro to partner with us on that.
Both councillor Gonzalez and I definitely support the efforts on the part of Beaverton and and Tiger, as well as Hillsborough and the other cities to uh get some of that money here and not just focus it in downtown Portland.
All right, I'm gonna hold you to it. I'm I'm coming. Anyone else have any question for our two metro councillors?
Yeah, I just have. Yeah, thank you. Um I completely agree. Uh as far as that waste map, that was really interesting to see where the calls are coming from. And uh as the mayor said, we, you know, we have folks that are concerned about it out here. I think they don't realize that there's a number to call for that, so there's a little bit of education that can be done there and I think we can help with that. Um on a completely separate note, and this is I just feel like I would regret it if I did not say something. You mentioned um the venues reopening and kind just getting back on their feet. Um the Oregon Zoo in particular, I just as a as a personal um attendant of the zoo and someone who has been concerned about this for a long time, I feel like I have a platform, so I'm gonna use it tonight to say that I really, really hope that Metro will rethink concerts at the zoo. Um I know that you get a lot of um feedback on this and uh concerns from people that know that the the loud noises are really disruptive for the animals that live there. Um so I wanted to add my voice to that, since there is a reopening here, maybe it's a time to to think about that. But thank you.
Use it events there, but not the the concerts like they used to be.
Thank you councillor Tivnan for sharing that.
All right, gentlemen. Thank you for joining us this evening. You get the rest of your evening back. I look forward to our next fireside chat in a quarter from now.
All right, absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to our second uh presentation of the evening, Agenda Bill two two one six two, year-round shelter presentation. I think we have Dan and Cece with us tonight. If there's anyone else, go over to introduce them and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Well, good evening to all. Uh Megan is sharing our presentation, so we're about to get started. I think we have about fifteen minutes, so we're gonna try to roll us really quickly. Uh so tonight, we are talking about the year-round shelter. Go ahead, Megan. Uh so this is our shelter core team, so I'm gonna ask them to just come on camera really quickly and just give a wave uh so everyone knows who you are. There they are. There they are. Thanks all. Let's keep rolling. Uh so everything that we do is based on values. Um and it's really important to us to keep grounded in the values. Um so when we talk about our values, we talk about hope, safety, community, health, transition and improving conditions. transition and improving conditions when we're doing the workaround, a year round shelter. And then, of course, all the plans that the city has as well, keep us grounded, the community vision, the DEI Plan, your priorities as a council and the climate action plan as well. Next, please. So other programming around people experiencing homelessness, we have the winter shelter. We have the safe parking program. We have an outreach worker at the Beaverton City Library. We have a street outreach team, which are fantastic folks. We have the social services grant funding and other resources that we're working on, a central Beaverton Resource Postcard that we just released and a homeless resource guide for Beaverton businesses as well. So these are all part of our, our toolkit that we're using. And there's much more to do. Shelter site selection guidelines and benefits. This is information that you saw back in November, so it's just a reminder of what we were looking for when we were citing a shelter, accessible to transit, avoiding socially isolated areas. We needed some setback. We needed large enough to accommodate staff and parking, some outdoor space. We needed to accommodate sleeping communal, communal space support services. We need it to be ADA accessible as well. So just taking you back to November on the work that you did at that time. Next, please. So we purchased a property in April. So that site address and information is on here. It's on Beaverton Hillsdale Highway. So some of those site criteria that we hit the mark on within city limits, 12,000 square foot building. It was built in 1984, got a newer roof, sprinklers and several exits. There's more work to do in construction. It's one acre, has 59 surface parking lots, parking spaces in front and back. It's mixed use zone. It's adjacent land uses to Highway 217. There's a gas station in Goodwill. Fred Meyer is across the street. There is one tenant in the building right now. We're exploring relocation options with that person. And we're working on security also as we go into construction mode at some point, but we have already hired private security to, to go around the site and we continue to discuss that and what else we can do. So photos of the site, just for folks who have not seen or aren't familiar with the property, public that are watching, this is the current building and this is where it's located. Next, please. So planned shelter programming. So what will we plan to do in that building, in that shelter? We will provide beds, meals, showers, 24/7, 365 day basis. It'll be operated and funded by Washington County, Supportive Housing Services. They will contract with a nonprofit operator. So it's very similar to the winter shelter. We're just doing it on a larger scale. There will be some sort of clinic space. We're working on that. We hope to have wraparound services and housing navigation, which is really important to have on site. It'll be a congregate shelter, meaning it's like an open space. There won't be private rooms there. It's congregate. That's what we mean when we say that. It'll be an adult shelter for 18 and over. We estimate it'll serve about 60 people, but we're still working on all of that. Intake will be by enrollment. So currently what we do at the winter shelter is, is the same. It'll intake by enrollment through Community Connect. So there'll be a process for folks to enroll. And we will continue to coordinate with other area shelters that are also coming online. That'll be a very needed coordinated effort also with BPD, Beaverton Police Department, which we already connect with and we will work closely with for requested placement. When that is needed, we will, we will make that happen as we do now in the winter shelter. That work will continue the same. So a couple, the next few slides are just definition slides. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on those. But they'll be here for you if you need to look back or the public will be able to see this presentation online as well. We wanted to just mention what supportive housing services is and that measure that was established. So we can keep moving through that, but it's there if you need it. What we mean when we say housing first, that definition is there. It's a best practice. So when we, when we say housing first, what does that mean? And when we say low barrier, what does that mean also? So that information is for you as well. Next, please. And then trauma informed, which is one of the things that are also part of our core tenants. What does trauma informed mean? And that's really important to us as well. So anticipated schedule milestones. These are anticipated. This is where we're at today. Summer 2022, we're doing neighbor and business engagement right now as we speak. We will be doing, selecting the owner's rep, which will be a next key part. In the fall, we're working, we're working now on this, but the memorandum of understanding will come together with the county and that'll be another critical piece that we need. The architect will be chosen, a construction manager, general contractor, or CMGC is what we call that, the construction manager, general contractor chosen, and the design will begin. In the spring is the official intergovernmental agreement. So the IGA will happen in the spring with some of those key factors that need to go into an IGA. Operator will be selected that will be running the shelter and we're going to start construction. The operator then will begin that work and will be hand in hand with the construction. That's really important to have the operator online. And we'll be doing a good neighbor agreement with those surrounding the property itself, really working on anything that folks need to know about the, the shelter and concerns that they have being neighbors. We will work on that agreement. And then winter 2023, spring 24, we're going to target shelter opening. Potential funding by use, this is where we're at today. We did shelter acquisition. That was 3.4 million, we, which was the cost of the acquisition. And we had four point and change million. That left us 650,000 left for design and construction. Pair that with the 350,000 that we had from short session awarded to Beaverton for that clinic space. So we have about a million available. We've got some upcoming funding potentials as well, tranche two in the city earmark. Washington County Supportive Housing Services also, which is dependent on the number of beds. And we need to start the design work to know officially how many beds and whatnot that we need. But that's a million we anticipate requesting. And then federal earmark, another three. So that gives us six million total potential additional and we do anticipate it's going to cost that much or potentially more. Next, please. So engagement, what we're planning or what we've already done. This Thursday, we have our first meeting with surrounding businesses. We'll be doing the same presentation to those businesses and starting that groundwork for a good neighbor agreement. We've done board and commission visits. We've visited our neighborhood association committees as well and done some presentations of those various groups, letting them know what we're doing and why we're doing it and how it's going to work. Design and construction, we'll do request for proposals with Washington County with about three providers to provide input. Operator selection will involve some community members as well. The county will lead that process. A good neighbor agreement, which I mentioned, but wanted to define that. It's a collaborative agreement between surrounding businesses, neighbors, the county, the operator. And then we've asked the Center for Mediation and Dialogue to come in and facilitate that process. This is what they do. They're going to be fantastic at it. But it's really a way to understand points of view, missions, results and compromises. This is the first good neighbor agreement I will have done. So I'm, I'm looking forward to it and I think there's going to be some really great work there. We've got a notification list via the city website that, that anyone can sign up for to get regular project updates. Shelter website is pretty solid and ready to go as well. And we'll put this presentation there also. And then all the citywide channels, your city newsletters, marketing, et cetera. So we've got a pretty good engagement plan ready to go and we're already pretty far into it. So ongoing communication that I mentioned, that website notification list. Here's the website or the email for contacting as well. And lots of people are utilizing that email as, as well already. And that's it. I tried. I really tried y'all to move quickly and efficiently.
That was amazing. And I think it is a great summary of the work that you guys have been doing behind the scenes. I don't think it tells the story of what it took to get here. So thank you to you and your team and thinking about all of those things, trauma informed care, what it means to work in our community, working on a rapid timeline. I, I just, the team, I can't speak enough of. Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Thank you. Thank you, Cece and team for the presentation. My ultimate goal is that everyone is, everyone in our community is housed and there'll be a day when we are selling this building because every single person in Beaverton has housing. But for now, I'm so, so excited that we are investing in this and in our community in this way. I just have a couple of quick questions. Cece, in the pre-read, it said that the clinic would only serve folks who were staying at the shelter. But I was curious if the scope of that could be anyone experiencing homelessness in Beaverton would have access to critical services. And this is something we can, you know, continue to talk about and answer later. I guess I'm just thinking like, depending on the hours of the clinic and things like that, you know, if we're serving 60 residents, do we have capacity to serve more with critical health services through the clinic? I'm also curious if the response time from Community Connect is, is, is kind of meeting the need, right? When someone's experiencing homelessness, it's an urgent thing that they may need shelter. So just making sure that like as part of that, and since we have history and, and experience with this through the severe weather shelter, I trust that things are good, but I just want to really make sure that that is a solid partnership and that response times are really meeting the need of our community. And then a super tangible thing, since it is a community, you know, that kind of open style shelter, just to make sure that folks have access to lockers to secure their belongings. So those are the kind of things that are on my mind as I read through. I know some of those are really nitty gritty, but yes.
Yeah, all good points. And yes, we have had conversations with Health and Human Services. I think that's the right department about what, what do clinic spaces, what are best practices for those? Also have had a really great conversation with Laurelwood already. That shelter in Portland and how they do their clinic space and how they serve and, and what's appropriate for outside folks that aren't shelter guests to come in. So yes, we, we're in deep conversations about that already. So you're spot on with that comment.
Thank you.
Councilor Mitchell? Yeah, thank you for that information. I think that this is a really great opportunity for us to have a very ironclad good neighbor agreement. And I think that we can really, really highlight to the community what is possible. Instead of the classic stereotype that kind of comes with this situation, we've seen a lot of failures around our neighboring communities. And we can really hit it out of the park. So I'm excited to see any of those drafts, you know, before. I, I don't think that they'll just go straight to consent or anything like that. But I'm, I'm very excited to see what we bring.
Counselor Hudson?
Yeah, thank you. I can't imagine how much work this is. And so I'm sure it's a labor of love. So thanks for all you're doing. I had two questions. When I was visiting with the local business that was across the street, so like in the Fred Meyer area, and they had just said that they'd been public notice, are they included in that community meeting or like what advice, like, okay, so I, go ahead, Cece.
Yeah, they, we did a pretty wide notification. So letters, we've done two rounds of letters to all of those surrounding businesses. Now, did everybody get the letter? No, I don't know.
I can, I can, I can always drop them to the site that you sent. The notifications are really great. I was just going to say, I just want to make sure like we're working with our small businesses, especially to like make sure that they feel supported and that they know that who they can call as part of those good neighbor agreements. And I know I've talked about this before, but just from a safety perspective, just being off that main road, I'm sure it'll come up in construction conversations, but just continuing to remember, I would hate for there to be some sort of fatality or something that would happen just because it is a very high traffic area and want to be really thoughtful of that. So, thank you.
Counselor Kimmy?
Hi, nice to see you, Cece. You're the first person I get to talk to. So about two things popped up to my head where, how are you coordinating with the encampment situation where we know, we know the Portland, when they set up the shelter, there's always the tent city that's forming around it. And then the people who has mental, mental illnesses and drugs and alcohol dependence, how are you going to coordinate that? Or they will be, I know it's a low barrier. I don't know what that really means in a sense that, oh, you're going to house them everybody at the same time? Or do we have a facility to send them? And how you, how are you going to coordinate with police officers in Washington County when, when they're not in the city of Beaverton? And those are the things that kind of pop into my head because there's some people around my neighborhoods in the morning screaming and I don't know who to call. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Yeah. Hi, Dr. Kimmy. Good to see you. Yes, encampments, we have been working with the county. We have been starting a, I guess it's a memorandum of understanding. I don't think it's IGA level yet, but we have been talking a lot about encampments as well. We do also have Greater Good Northwest, which is our street outreach team, which we just extended, are working on extending their contract. So they also are helping with the encampment situation. We work with BPD pretty closely on all of that. But yeah, it is, there is a lot of coordination. You're absolutely spot on with that comment. There's a lot that's needed in coordinating and knowing who to outreach to and what can people do and what can BPD do and what we cannot do. So that is something we're working on almost every day. So it is, it, it, it is a concern. It's going to continue. But you know, the shelter won't always be the right fit for everyone also. You know, we need to, we need to also recognize that that is also a factor. So it, it's really why we have to keep working on coordinating with the county. So we can get people at least some services and what, what they might need. We were, we're hoping with that, whatever we're calling it, clinic space wraparound services as well, that we do have, mental health is going to be a big part of those wraparound services and we have to have that there as well. That is a little bit why I think having services just for those 60 guests also enables us to work with those folks that are there on a more regular basis than people who flow in and out. So that's another thing we're talking a lot about. And remember CAT, Center for Addiction, Triage and Treatment. Did I get that right? CAT? That center is also coming online in Beaverton and I'm on that committee too. So we're working with the CAT and making sure that we're coordinating and also having good conversations with them about how we get all this stuff online, really around the same time, which is kind of exciting also, but also we're actually talking, which is a really good thing.
Counselor Tibner?
Thank you. Yeah, that, Cece, that was something I was going to bring up was the CAT. And I would love to get an update from Washington County on, on that project because I know it's still in development. And understand the timeline for that because I think there's so many critical aspects of communication and there is no one number to call. There's going to be several, there's going to be several different types of scenarios that we're going to have to try and plan for. But the other part of this is the fact that we're not the only place that'll have a shelter and Hillsborough is working on that. Hopefully every other city in Washington County gets their acts together and starts thinking about this too, because it's a regional issue. This is cross borders of all cities issue. And while I would hope that our shelter would first and foremost be serving folks in Beaverton, I do expect we're going to be getting individuals from other parts of the tri-county area that are simply looking for a bed. And one of the things that I know is just starting to percolate out there is this idea of getting together a comprehensive kind of real time view of what beds are available and where. That is a pretty big enterprise and probably something that Metro would need to be involved in. But is it possible for us to stand up some sort of pilot projects with Hillsborough? You know, is there a way for us to get really, really good, clean, efficient, quick communication channels open and operating and really well thought out before the place even opens is, is something I think is, it, it's going to be really necessary. And it's also, you only get one chance to, you know, do it right the first time around and it would be really the first time around. And it would be really great for us to set an example for others in the, in the region that are starting to think about what a shelter in their area is going to look like. So last thing though, is I really would love to get Washington County some representative in to talk to us about what's going on with the CAT and, and anything else related to the subject that would, that would be germane to these conversations that we're having.
Counselor Mitchell?
Yeah, one thing, C C, that I just remembered when I was out with the bike team was holding our program partners accountable. And I'm not really quite sure what that might look like, but I know that, you know, we've had really great success with the safe parking program. And that, the elements of that, like drug testing and getting people actually out of their homeless car, you know, and into housing has been a win. If there is something that we can model similar to that, because you know, I think the thing is, is a lot of our city services, we're not trying to create a dependency, especially in situations like this. We're trying to create independence and empowerment, you know, and I think that if we have those elements built into whatever the program might look like, those could be a winning situation as well.
Counselor Hudson?
Yeah, I was just thinking out loud and Jenny, you can, you know, keep me honest, like, are there ways for us to use this opportunity to educate, not just our council, but the community on like what the laws and rules are around, like, you know, camps and like, because there's so much that a couple of us know, but I don't know all of us know consistently. And then I think that there's like an educational opportunity with the community as well. And as this team does this work, right, as these agreements start to come, like finding ways to make these agreements educational enough that we could share them more publicly. It's a thought. It just in my head, like there's some people I think they're like, well, I want to do this. And, and there's a law that says that we can't, and we just need to be really thoughtful. And if we're building these documents already, if there's ways to build in that education, not just for our council, but for the community as well.
I absolutely think we can do that, Counselor Hudson. I think that will organically happen over time and we're already doing that with the business community. The mayor and I meeting with them and, and informing them what we can and cannot do, but focusing on what we can do.
And our shelter website too. I think the shelter website is a great place where we're starting to drive people and we can put some of those educational pieces on there as we continue to build it out. That's, that's a good idea.
And like this presentation, like just some of the stuff, like the way you all defined S H S and that kind of stuff. I mean, I'll let you decide, but I, I thought that it was really helpful. So.
Great.
Uh, thank you for that. And I think sometimes two different messaging for different audiences, right? When the city manager and I are out talking to business owners, they don't particularly care what the federal, like, you know, they don't care about the things that we care about and how we're saying things. They care about what they care about. So, you know, sometimes we do need different audiences for different people or different messaging because, you know, their bottom line is, it's something very important to them. So. Uh, C C, do you have anything else from the council tonight?
No, I'm going to see you for the multicultural center presentation. So I'll be back.
Okay. Cause I thought this one was like pretty easy. So better buckle up for the next one.
I got it. I'll be ready.
All right. Okay, council, we are in for our public hearings of the evening. As you know, we have a few of them tonight. So the next five items on tonight's agenda are public hearings. Each hearing will be handled separately. But before we begin, I'll ask the city attorney to explain how people can participate in tonight's hearings.
Anyone wishing to speak at one of tonight's public hearings should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. To call in, dial six, six, nine, two, five, four, five, two, five, two. You'll be asked to enter tonight's meeting ID number, which is one, six, one, six, nine, two, three, seven, nine, nine. Again, that's one, six, one, six, nine, two, three, seven, nine, nine. And that's followed by the pound sign. Then you enter a participant ID number, which is zero, six, two, one, two, two, followed by the pound sign. Once you've joined the meeting, you can enter star nine to let the city recorder know that you wish to speak. Alternatively, if you've joined this meeting already online, you can let the city recorder know you wish to speak by clicking on the raised hand feature. Each member of the public who speaks at a hearing tonight has up to three minutes to speak. When you speak, please give your name and address for the record. After each person speaks, council members may ask questions of the speaker. Mayor Beatty, I want to make sure that you are first going to be dealing with the issue of whether we're going to be handling this as an expedited hearing. And that would be the motion that would be needed to be made and seconded and unanimously approved as described in page, page one of this portion of the scripts. That's all.
Okay. Do we want to make this an expedited hearing, council president?
Well, I'm, I have a motion that Mr. City Attorney has provided to, to allow us to consider that. But before we do that, perhaps Ms. Tweedy or Ms. Hariyama would like to explain the rationale for going to an expedited hearing in this case.
I'd be happy to respond to that question. Cheryl Tweedy, Community Development Director for the City of Beaverton. The fundamental reason is that on July one, twenty twenty-two, the state model ordinance will take effect if local governments have not adopted their own local ordinance. Because this project has been underway for essentially four years and has involved substantial public engagement, committee engagement, technical analyses reviewed by council and by planning commission. Your staff is recommending that the Housing Options Project be adopted under emergency ordinance and take effect July one, twenty twenty-two. So that on the effective date of House Bill two thousand and one, our own Beaverton styled ordinance will be in effect rather than implementing a state model ordinance.
Thank you. Appreciate the explanation. With that, for the purposes of discussion, I will make the motion that the city council authorize use of an expedited public hearing on the Housing Options Project ordinance before us.
Is there a second?
I can.
Seconded by Counselor San. Any discussion on tonight's motion? Let's see. Counselor Mitchell?
Yeah, I just need to better understand. So let's say the state ordinances, you know, they take place. What is it that we can gain by, by doing this so quickly? I mean, what is it that we're going to lose if we don't do this, aside from just being compliant with state regulations?
Yeah, thank you for your question, Counselor Mitchell. I'll, I'll take a stab at it and then I'll ask Brian Martin to join me if, if you would like more info. The, the fundamental reason is that on July one, we, if we, the city received an application for missing middle housing, we and our ordinance was not in effect, then we would need to implement the state model ordinance. We presume that the city ordinance will be in effect shortly thereafter. So quite frankly, creates a very complicated situation of two different ordinances, very similar, but not identical. And applications received prior to the city's ordinance taking effect would then be processed under the state ordinance. Applications received after the city ordinance took effect would be processed under the city ordinance. So really, for the sake of simplifying the system and the regulatory environment for potential developers, we're recommending that the Beaverton ordinance essentially take effect July one.
So if we don't do that, and we just follow the non-emergency, you know, prescribed process, what does that timeline look like?
The, the state model ordinance takes effect July one. So for every day that our model, our ordinance isn't in effect, we would then be applying the state ordinance.
Right. I totally understand that. I'm just saying, how long will it take us if we did not enact an emergency? Because I don't think this is an emergency, you know, and I, I feel like there's a lot of governments that just throw that around too much. I think that, you know, I want to understand if we were just to follow standard procedure and get this going, what would that timeline possibly look like? And I know it's probably, you know, fluid, but there has to be some estimate somewhere.
Absolutely. Bill?
What would happen if the motion did not pass unanimously is that tonight we would simply announce that we were scheduling this matter for a public hearing on July nineteenth. And that would be the typical time, the way that we have enacted ordinances in the past, hold the public hearing on July nineteenth. And then you would probably be able to enact the ordinance that night, or you could delay even until August. But I think given the desire to have things move as much in sync as possible, if the desire is also not to do it on an expedited passion, it would be that on July nineteenth, you'd most likely would vote on whether or not to adopt the ordinance. That vote would only be by majority vote, the ordinance would pass. Just so that you're aware, in tonight with the expedited hearing, it would require that every, the vote be unanimous to adopt the ordinance. In other words, you both have to have a unanimous decision to have an expedited hearing and the decision you make at the end of the hearing has to be to unanimously approve the ordinance. If you're going to adopt an ordinance in one evening. That's the way the charter was written and it safeguards against what I think Counselor Mitchell kind of described as something that might be used too often. Unanimous requirement amongst all the councils. But otherwise, July nineteenth would be the date we would most likely have the public hearing and ask council to adopt the ordinance. If the, and that would go into effect if nothing else thirty days after that, which would make it sometime in August, unless you had an emergency clause on that July nineteenth ordinance, in which case it could go in effect as soon as the ordinance is signed.
But for, for Counselor Mitchell's sake, that it would be the same meeting that we're holding tonight. It would just be on July nineteenth if we didn't do it on this timeline, but it would be the same presentation. And people are here to comment on tonight expecting it. So is that correct?
Yes, other than you would read into the record that that hearing would be scheduled for the nineteenth of July.
So then just to kind of follow up on that, why then is it an emergency now and, and still an emergency then, instead of why can't we just pass it tonight? And then have it be thirty days later? Why does it have to be an emergency tonight?
I, I think this gets back to being in sync, but I'll let C D D Director Tweedy answer that question in full.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. I'll, I'll take another stab at responding to your question. First of all, we don't know how many applications might come in the door on July one or July two or July five, for that matter of fact. But what we do know is that it will be slightly confusing to have two different sets of rules guiding those land use applications when they come into the city. So our recommendation for your consideration this evening is that the, the Housing Options Project be adopted this evening via emergency ordinance, which is not typical. It's not something we do very often because we truly believe in public process and ensuring that all voices have a part, have a part in that process. Again, I'll just say that there has been extensive public process on this body of work. And I think you'll see later this evening that there are really just a few public comments that we expect to hear this evening. We'll be, I want to be very respectful, very important. The limited number doesn't mean that they're not significant comments for you to hear. But I think what that does tell you is that we've done a good job of engaging with our community and the development community and neighborhoods to give them some sense of what these changes mean going forward.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Counselor Mitchell? Okay, Counselor Tibnan?
Yeah, and I'll try and make this brief. I think that we've received an influx of comments in the last few days on this and it's probably typical as you get closer to a public hearing that it gets into people's consciousness. Oh yeah, I better say something now or it's going to happen. What I'm concerned about is are we going to have the time adequately tonight to address some comments that I frankly hadn't thought of before, like one around transparency of commercial interest purchasing homes here in Beaverton. That was a new one for me. I hadn't, that was kind of a head scratcher. I know that Planning Commission has gone through and addressed some of the comments that have come through from potential developers that are seeing some issues, some unintended consequences that might result. And I appreciate their work in helping to clear through that and address it in ways that'll help us. I, I guess what I'm, the vibe that I'm getting from, from residents that are writing in on this is that there's a fear of the, if we don't measure twice and cut once, that we might end up with something that could create problems for our neighborhoods down the road. So I guess twofold, one is making sure that we, you know, the conversation we have tonight and that the, the questions that are raised by any folks that call in are, we're able to answer them sufficiently tonight to get to a place where we feel comfortable that that there won't be an unintended consequence attached to whatever their concern is. And, and then also if, if we do end up realizing, oops, we planned for something and in reality that doesn't work very well. What, what does the process look like to make revisions down the road? And just maybe for my benefit, maybe other counselors to understand what that looks like. And then also for people that might be tuning in tonight with interest to see how this conversation goes to understand if we declare this an ordinance, so with that we streamline the process and create consistency for anyone who might submit an application, great. If, if down the road, we decide maybe that F A R requirements or the glazing requirements needs to get adjusted, what does the process look like for that?
Counselor Tibnan, did you want me to respond to that comment or question?
Um, I just, I, I don't need an extensive one, but just assurances that if we do end up moving forward tonight, since we are kind of in, in unknown territory a lot, every city is having to respond to this and figure out what works best for their community. What do we do down the road to make adjustments if needed?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that question and that comment. Every community in Oregon is essentially choosing to either implement the state model code or to implement their own ordinances. Beaverton obviously has chosen to develop its own set of ordinances. But more specifically, to answer your question, the council always has the prerogative to amend the development code. Sometimes amendments come in from staff. Sometimes amendments come in through applicants and sometimes amendments are initiated by the city. So if you were to act this evening on this body of work, you have the ability at any time in the future to come back and make amendments to the language if it's not meeting your goals, it's, if it's not working or if there's any other reason to make changes in the future.
Great, thank you. I, I think that's beneficial for people that are tuning in when we're talking about things like this that could directly impact them or their neighborhoods to know that we're not etching this stuff into granite, but we have, we have to get moving. And sometimes there's iteration. So thank you for clarifying that.
Counselor Hartmeyer, break.
Thank you, Mayor. I just think I would throw in that I think it's important for us to approve the expedited hearing motion so that we can get into the meat of the, of the questions that even you raised, Counselor Tibnan, because we have heard a lot from our community in the last week. And so for us to get to address those tonight, we do need to move forward with that expedited hearing. So I would love for us to do that so that then we can kind of make that informed decision on, on the motion.
Okay, so for clarity of where we are right now, there's a motion on the floor to have an expedited hearing on tonight's agenda. If you vote yes, we'll continue with tonight's public hearing and go through and answer the questions that have been submitted and have a, have the staff understanding. If we vote no tonight on this motion, then I will announce that we'll have a future. We will stay over this meeting until July nineteenth. So that is where we are right now. So with that, are there any more questions before I have the recorder call the roll? So with that, are there any more questions before I have the recorder call the roll? Okay, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell?
Yes.
Counselor Sansusi?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes. Okay, all right, let's rock and roll. Thank you. We will now start our first public hearing regarding the ordinance related to a housing option project and amending the comprehensive plan, volume one, chapters one, two, four, five, and appendix two. CPA two zero two two dash zero zero four, the zoning map ZMA two zero two two dash zero zero four. And Beaverton Development Code, chapters ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, and ninety. TA twenty twenty-two dot oh 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 two, I now call to order the public hearing. Before we move to the substance of the hearing, I'll ask the city attorney to cover any preliminary matters.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's land use hearing will proceed as follows. After the preliminary legal matters that I'll cover here, staff will make a presentation. The council will have an opportunity to ask questions. Then the council will hear public testimony. After the council asks any final questions of staff, the hearing will be closed. And the council will discuss the proposal and make a decision. We've explained earlier how you can participate in the hearing. Now to some legal matters, I'll explain the criteria that council must use to make its decision tonight. And then I will ask the members of council if they wish to make any disclosures. Council's decision on this, the adoption of the ordinance must be based on the consideration of, one, the statewide planning goals and the administrative rules adopted under ORS chapter one ninety-seven. Second, the applicable federal or state statutes or rules. And third, applicable plans and rules adopted by Metro. And fourth, the city's comprehensive plan and its development code. The council may consider any relevant testimony that it receives. Failure to raise an issue during the city's hearing on this ordinance precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Any party withstanding may appeal the decision of the city council to the State Land Use Board of Appeals according to the rules adopted by that board. Persons withstanding include those who submit work, written comments, or present oral comments. Now I need to talk to the council about conflicts of interest. Do any members of the council wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest? And I'm going to point out to you that if you own real estate, residential real estate in the city of Beaverton, then it would most likely be that you have to disclose a potential conflict of interest. It would be that you would have to disclose that you own the residential property in Beaverton and that you may be affected by the proposed ordinance. Therefore, you have a potential conflict of interest. You will need to decide whether or not that potential conflict of interest will or will not impact your ability to make a fair and impartial decision on this ordinance. So first of all, does any member of the council wish to declare a potential con or actual conflict of interest?
Mr. City Attorney, my family and I own rental property within the city of Beaverton boundaries. I do not believe that I have a actual conflict of interest and I do not believe it will impact my ability to make a fair and impartial decisions on the ordinances ahead of us tonight.
All right. Any other council members with disclosures of potential or actual conflicts of interest?
I also own property in the city of Beaverton and I will be impartial in this matter.
And you are saying that you have a potential but not actual conflict of interest?
Potential but not actual.
Anyone else?
City Attorney, this is Counselor Ashley Hartmeyer-Prigg. I would like to disclose that I own residential property in Beaverton that may be affected by the proposed ordinance. Therefore, I may have a potential conflict of interest, but it will not impact my ability to make a fair and impartial decision on this ordinance.
Right? Any other disclosures?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Oh, I I second what Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg said.
All right, a potential conflict of interest, but you don't think it will affect your ability to make a fair and impartial decision?
I will add the same thing. This is Counselor Hassan. I'm disposing that I own residential property in Beaverton that may be affected by the proposed ordinance. I have a potential conflict of interest, but it will not impact my ability to make a fair and impartial decision on this ordinance.
And just to add on to it, I own a residence here in Beaverton. I have a potential but not actual conflict of interest and pledge to be impartial in these matters.
Right. Dr. Kimmy?
Same for me. I own a residential and commercial property in Beaverton. I will be impartial. Potential po conflict of interest, but I'll be fair.
All right. Now, are there any other conflicts of interest to be disclosed? Hearing none. I'll ask now about the, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the ability of any member of the council to participate in this decision? City Recorder, is there anyone appearing to want to challenge the ability of a counselor?
No challenge.
Nope, all right. All right. Mayor, that concludes the legal matters. I'll turn it over to you now.
Awesome. Thank you. Let's proceed with the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Beatty and city counselors. My name is Rob Zeller. I'm an associate planner with the Planning Division. I'm joined this evening by Brian Martin, long range planning manager, and Alena Sasson, an associate planner. I'm here to present amendments to the Comprehensive Plan Development Code and zoning map related to the Housing Options Project. To start, I will present a project overview and then amendments to the Comprehensive Plan Development Code and zoning map in that order. These amendments are in your packet. Exhibits A through C include drafts with markups. Exhibits six and seven include drafts without markups. And Exhibits twelve, fourteen, and fifteen present testimony regarding the proposed amendments. After I present the amendments, I will present potential revisions to these amendments. Exhibit eleven describes staff recommended code revisions that resolve administrative errors and respond to planning commission requests. And Exhibit thirteen presents an alternative approach to the Comprehensive Plan based on two neighborhoods' land use designations. I will then end with a staff recommendation, which is to recommend approval of the three amendments. The goal of this project is to allow a mix of housing types at a range of price levels in the city's residential areas. We started this project in twenty eighteen to implement city policies, but it does overlap with the intent of House Bill two thousand and one, which requires most cities in Oregon to allow housing variety in neighborhoods. We've conducted extensive community engagement over the past four years. We used racial equity toolkit to guide a more equitable engagement approach. Often this meant prioritizing engagement for renters, immigrants, racially segregated populations, and residents concerned about displacement. This slide presents a snapshot of some of the community conversations that we've had to discuss these changes. At the May eleventh public hearing, staff presented the amendments to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission recommended that council approve the amendments. They also asked us to consider three items prior to this council hearing, which are described in Exhibit eleven. For council to approve the amendments, the project must meet all relevant approval criteria, which are listed on this slide and in Exhibit two. That concludes the project background. Now we'll present the Comprehensive Plan amendments. Even though the Comprehensive Plan already has a policy that calls for a wider variety of housing choices in neighborhoods, it needs to be updated so that it is consistent with proposed changes to the code and state law. The first set of changes that we'll discuss involve chapter three, the land use settlement, which guides the type, location, and distribution of land uses throughout the city. Tonight, we will only discuss changes to neighborhoods, which is the land use category that prioritizes residential uses. On the land use map, neighborhoods currently have four designations, high density, medium, standard, and low density. The updated map produces the land use designations from four to three. Low-density neighborhoods are deleted from the map. Standard density neighborhood has been renamed lower density, which consolidates the existing standard density and low-density areas. There are no changes to high-density neighborhoods on the map, but there are a few changes to policy text. Other changes to the Comprehensive Plan include chapter one, which governs how land use designations and zoning districts are applied to properties after annexation. On this slide is an excerpt of a table that only applies to non-discretionary map amendments that can be approved by council. The table shows which county land use districts correspond with city comprehensive plan designations as well as city zoning districts. Other changes to the code reflect updated land use designations, more specific housing type names, and how the code regulates density. And that brings us to the Development Code and Zoning Map Amendments. The amendments allow housing variety in all residential zones, establish minimum lot sizes for all housing types that are lower than what is required in the current code, and increase minimum density in each proposed zone, given that we've merged zones. The proposed amendments generally reduce front setbacks to ten feet and rear setbacks to fifteen feet in RMB and RMC. Side setbacks internal to land divisions are reduced from five feet to three feet, but for most other cases, side setbacks are five feet. The proposed amendments also include additional height limitations for some housing types in the RMB and RMC zones. Depending upon the zone, additional height limitations discourage heights above two stories only if buildings are close to front and rear lot lines. In these cases, the exterior walls could rise to twenty-five feet, but then each must taper at a forty-five degree angle before they reach the height maximum of thirty-five feet. This approach recognizes the existing context of older neighborhoods with one, two-story homes and creates standards that help newer homes fit in while still supporting three-story homes. Where additional height limitations do not apply, building height is thirty-five feet or forty feet depending upon the zone. The amendments also propose to regulate the scale and bulk of new buildings through floor area ratio maximums, also known as FAR. FAR is the total floor area of all buildings on a lot divided by the lot area. It regulates size only, not height or building placement on a lot. The amendments propose FAR maximums for single detached homes and allow higher limits for flexes to improve feasibility. That brings us to parking. Generally, the amendments require up to one off-street parking space per unit for all housing types depending upon the lot size. An exception is for townhouses with shared parking where the requirement is zero point seven five spaces per unit. The amendments also allow on-street parking credits for flexes and cottage clusters only. The amendments also include new design standards and guidelines. Currently, we do not require design review for single detached housing, but we do require design review for middle housing. This would change with the proposed amendments. On this slide is an example of design standards that are generally shared among all housing types. This includes requirements for entry location, window coverage, outdoor open area requirements, and driveways among others. If an applicant would like some additional flexibility, then they are free to meet the design guidelines instead of design standards. An example of a design standard is tree planting. Currently, we do not have tree planting requirements for new homes in most circumstances. However, the amendments include design standards for tree plantings, which are based on tree planting area. Also, if a property owner preserves trees on site, they are allowed extra building square footage over the maximum allowed building size. There are also some other code changes that are included to comply with state law. These address things such as establishing limits on HOA rules, allowing middle housing land divisions, and eliminating the minimum size for manufactured homes. With new land use designations and code requirements, this also means that implementing zoning districts need to be updated. The MR zone would implement the high-density designation. Both RMA and RMB implement the medium-density designation. And both RMB and RMC would implement the lower-density neighborhoods designation. Now I'd like to discuss potential revisions to the Development Code. Exhibit eleven captures omissions and errors in the text amendment. These are potential revisions one through six. And potential revisions seven through eight respond to planning commission requests. Staff recommends that council approves revisions one through eight in exhibit eleven. Exhibit thirteen includes information about an alternative approach to the Comprehensive Plan. Staff proposed and planning commission recommended that three land use designations be established in the neighborhoods category and Comprehensive Plan chapters one and three. Based on council feedback, there has been some interest in revising the approach to reduce the number of land use designations to two. Exhibit thirteen provides additional information on the goals and policies that would need to change in chapters one and three. And it also includes an updated crosswalk table for chapter one, which indicates that there would be only one neighborhood designation in the table. And that brings us to the testimony section. In Exhibits twelve and fifteen, some community members have shared concerns that higher-density housing will change neighborhood character, decrease property values, and diminish tree canopy, among other things. And in Exhibit fourteen, we address concerns from home builders that FAR maximums and additional height limitations may affect development feasibility. And that window coverage requirements are too high in some situations. Exhibit fourteen also includes a staff response to these concerns. And we have additional reference slides available if council wishes to discuss any of these issues further. That concludes the presentation. Staff recommends that city council conduct a public hearing and receive all public testimony relating to the proposal. Considering the public testimony and the facts and findings presented in the staff report and supplemental memos, deliberate on policy issues and other issues identified by council or the public, and approve the three applications with amendments as needed, including potential revisions in the supplemental memos. Thank you.
Okay, are there questions of staff? Okay. Okay, you're reserving your right to answer more by asking the question. I I appreciate that. Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak? Wait, okay, so this is the time where we'll take public comment on this. So is there anyone wishing to speak now? Okay, Nicole, you'll be the first up tonight to address the council.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. And when you speak, please give your name and address and remember to speak clearly so we can understand. You'll have three minutes to speak once you're ready to go.
Okay, terrific. My name is Nicole and I currently reside at forty seventy Southwest one hundred and seventh Avenue, apartment B five in Beaverton, Oregon. And I think that with the metro, with what you guys are actually doing is going to be like terrific due to the fact that in the United States, there's three hundred and twenty-nine, five hundred thousand million people. And currently, right now, we only have housing for a hundred and forty-two million people. So I think this would be a great idea, actually building more homes for people to be able to pay in a future reference. And but but as far as in speaking, just like about like the homeless crisis situation, I'm not sure if you guys are quite aware like that. The homelessness was estimated to be two percent of the Earth's worldwide population, which is approximately a hundred and fifty-four million people worldwide. And it's now, you know, and this was calculations from two thousand and nineteen. So it's now almost like three years later. And there's nearly like one million five hundred thousand homeless people in the United States of America who are experiencing homelessness according to the most recent twenty twenty calculations, as well as some extra calculation just to make sure that we're like over calculating and almost left behind. And that's not including like the six hundred thousand people that's And that's not including like the six hundred thousand people that's projected to be released from prison in two thousand and twenty-two and the six hundred thousand people that's projected to be released from prison in two thousand and twenty-three, who could possibly experience homelessness, which is a total estimation of two million seven hundred thousand homeless people. So I'm just trying to figure out like with these numbers, you know, like what do you guys think? Maybe this might help you in the future reference. Because like in order to house all these individuals, we would actually need to build like ten thousand eight hundred apartment complexes with two hundred and fifty units in each apartment complex, which would be a total of two million seven hundred thousand apartment complexes to house every person. And and I know, I do understand, this is like, I don't know, like the specific, you know, like with the numbers and the calculations of doing my research and utilizing the information that has been provided. It's like I wasn't given like the exact number of like how many family members there is or how many children there is, you know. There was information like talking about like college students, you know, chronic homelessness, things of that nature. But it wasn't like specifically knowing like how many children there are, or you know, like who's adults, who are not adults, who's single, who's together, and things of that nature. But but yeah, like I just wanted to give you, you know, that information and just let you guys know that I think that what you're doing is great. And and I just can't wait to see what transpires in the near future.
Thank you, Nicole. Part of our script is the council can ask you questions, so we can hang on one second. Are there any questions of the speaker before we move to the next one? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Nicole, for spending your time and hanging on the line to address us tonight. We appreciate it. All right, Matt Wellner, you are up next.
Good evening, councilors and mayor Beatty. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great, thank you. My name is Matt Wellner. I work with Crandall Group. We're a local builder, developer, real estate brokerage. We work in new home construction primarily. Our address is one four seven eight seven Southwest Millikan Way and Beaverton nine seven zero zero three. I submitted a letter last Wednesday addressing floor area ratios, building height, and glazing restrictions. These are really technical issues, not a whole lot of fun, but they're issues that builders deal with every day. The simple non-technical view of them is that more limitations will mean fewer opportunities, reduce flexibility, and just less housing in Beaverton. I know that there was builder engagement in this process. My concern about is about the timing of that engagement. I think that there were a lot of general comments, a desire for flexibility, lower fees, et cetera. But who really has the time to read two hundred and thirty-five pages of development code changes? Who's going to absorb that info? Think about how it affects the on-the-ground reality and bring in solutions. The only reason I did is because I have a project that's going to be affected by these coded options, and I want to build more in Beaverton. In general, staff has done a great job, but FAR building height and glazing requirements are too restrictive. They will significantly limit design flexibility, design creativity, and together they will act like the roadblock that House Bill two thousand and one was brought forth to eliminate. It's also important to note just how much of the city these requirements will affect. It's not a small corner. It's all of the city's RMB and RMC zone land, which represents most of the city's residentially zoned areas. I can't stress enough how important it is that you consider some fixes for these issues. I've offered some options in my letter. I understand that the July one date is quickly approaching. If I didn't consider these issues to be critically important, I wouldn't have raised them this at this late hour. House Bill two thousand and one isn't about changing people's preferences. It's not about limiting design options. It's not even about affordable housing. It's about eliminating roadblocks by making more housing types outright allowed uses. It's also about limiting process and criteria and just getting more homes on the ground. Let's work in the spirit of that. Let's fix these issues and move forward with a code that motivates builders to build more housing, middle housing in particular in Beaverton. And thanks for your consideration. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Is there anyone that has any questions for Matt this evening? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Matt. Oh, sorry, Councilor Hartmeyer, go ahead.
Thank you. Matt, thank you for taking time to address us tonight. I'm going to ask you this question that I'm going to ask our staff, Rob, this question as well. But I'm just curious specifically around FAR glazing and the building height. You know, I don't know if you've also had a chance to look at the model code from HB two thousand and one, but I'm curious if you have the same concerns about HB two thousand and one.
I don't have the same concerns about height. In fact, the limitations, the height, it says in the model code that thirty-five feet is the maximum height you can regulate to. You guys are kind of getting around that because you're you're requiring a lower building height to just even single-family detached homes, which is allowing you then you then to apply that to a middle housing product as well. So the height limitation that's in your code is not a limitation that we would that we would see in the model code. The FARs are different, but I haven't done the math on them to speak to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. Seth, you're now up to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Seth Alfer. Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you. Give me one second.
Let me, I'm going to be switching between windows, so you'll have to remind me when my three minutes is up. Thank you. I was a planning commissioner for the city of Beaverton in nineteen eighty-eight, nineteen eighty-nine. During my tenure as a planning commissioner, we improved many single-family subdivisions. And there was never the idea, never the question, that a future legislature would upend those single-family developments with an HB two thousand and one and make it okay to put apartments in the middle of those subdivisions. And make no mistake, a quadplex or missing middle home is just a rebranding of an apartment building with another name. Yes, if you check my address, eight nine one five Southwest Rosewood Way, Portland, Oregon, nine seven two two five. And if you check that address, you will find that I'm currently living about three blocks outside the city of Beaverton as the crows fly. And I have written to the Grouchy County Plan Commission in opposition to their ordinance to implement HB two thousand and one. And I'm writing to you, and I'm testifying here anyway, because H two thousand and one is just a bad idea. I wrote a letter. I wish to incorporate that letter as part of my testimony tonight. My three minutes will not allow me to go through that entire letter, so in the interest of time, I'd like to move on to another point. Let's talk about LCDC goal one, citizen involvement. I heard the community development director congratulate herself on how well the city has engaged the community. I think she needs to stop patting herself on the back and listen to the testimony that was given at planning commission. From what I heard, the city did not effectively engage the community. There was many complaints that the notification that people received was too bureaucratic. I didn't receive a copy of it, as I'm no longer Beaverton resident, of course. I believe that because this was insufficiently communicated to the public, this is a violation of LCDC goal one. We started the meeting talking about conflict of interest, started the public hearing about conflict of interest. If you go back and listen to the old planning commission meetings, you will don't, but I several times recused myself over conflict of interest, so I have some understanding of that. Speaker Kotek, who pushed for House Bill two thousand and one, received significant contributions from building industry interests, which then Kotek gave him to HB two thousand and one. It's a gift for them. As with many industries, their purpose in life is to take raw material and convert it to finished goods. And I don't think there are single-family subdivisions in Beaverton should be the raw material for finished goods. And I urge you to read my letter that I submitted, and I see them just about at a time, and I will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Any questions for Seth this evening? Okay, seeing none. Thank you for joining us tonight, Seth. All right, so now we're part of the agenda where do this council have any question for staff? Hold on, I'm sorry. Karen, I know you had raised your hand and lowered your hand. Are you here to speak on this agenda item tonight? I don't want to miss the opportunity for you.
I do want to speak. I'm sorry that that got confusing.
It's okay. Go ahead. You have three minutes to address the council.
Okay, great. Thank you for letting me speak. I did attend the planning commission meeting where this was approved by planning commission. I want to speak hopefully on four areas. The first is something Seth brought up, which is the transparency of the official notice. I got that notice. Frankly, couldn't understand it. I'm a college graduate in accounting. I couldn't understand it. I looked at the documents online. I couldn't understand them. All I knew was that a zoning change would be made to where I lived. I did email with members of the planning department and found out about those changes. I spoke with at least six of my neighbors, all of which received the one of the twenty-four thousand letters that went out, but none of them could understand it. So when we're talking transparency, that was not happening. In the time that this has been worked on, I knew none of this was happening. So that's my first comment. It was not transparent to those of us who received the notice. I've lived in my house for twenty-nine years. I bought it. I paid for it. I specifically chose this neighborhood. My house was about ten years old to live in a single-family residence. And what you're doing will change this. I have no problem with making denser housing available where you are not changing the neighborhood that I chose to live in. This neighborhood cannot support a denser housing initiative. The streets can't support it. The infrastructure can't support it. Let me give you an example. On the corner of my cul-de-sac is a sober living house. Fine. They have anywhere from ten to twenty residents in that house at any one time. Currently, there are at least eight cars associated with that house. Two are in the driveway and six are parked on the streets on the corner of my cul-de-sac. That makes for a dangerous entry and exit out of our cul-de-sac every time those cars are there. If the torn-down house or the crappy house in my cul-de-sac gets purchased and rebuilt as a quadplex, which the property is big enough, that would potentially add probably another eight cars going in and out of the cul-de-sac. So we're not set up for that kind of stuff. Finally, I really hate to bring this up, but as I sat in the planning commission meeting, two planning commission members asked questions of the staff, and the rest sat there looking bored to tears. I'm sorry, bored to tears, didn't ask any questions, so I have to question how much they really knew what they were voting on. I want my neighborhood to stay walkable and safe, and that's why I've spent the time here, beginning at six o'clock, to be able to present to you. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Karen. Is there anyone that has any questions for our speaker? Counselor Mitchell.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to take the time to say thank you, Karen, about the transparency comment. And I just wanted to make a comment to staff. I think that was the number one complaint I heard about the notice. And you know, in this council, we talk a lot about removing barriers, and I think that this is a huge one. Not only does something like this discourage people from engagement, but it's very frustrating when you know that you're impacted and you don't understand how. So I definitely think that we need to take this to heart, and I understand that code is what it is. But there needs to be some sort of clearer, you know, for the lack of a better word, layman translation as to what it is that's being done, because it is a very, a huge lack of transparency when it comes to these very major changes that people are doing, that they're going to have to endure in their neighborhoods, and they're not even exactly sure what that looks like.
Thank you. Any other questions for the speaker tonight? Okay, thank you for joining us, Karen. So now we're on to questions from the council to staff. Counselor Hartmeyer, Prig.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Rob. I'm curious to hear just a little bit about, you know, around FAR glazing and building heights and how our city, you know, proposed code compares to the model code. I was just quickly looking at it. Model code seems very light. So I would just kind of love to hear, you know, I know that we have to be as flexible as or more flexible than the model code. That's my understanding. So I would just love to hear a little bit from you about those three specific concerns, because we did hear them a couple of times, and how our code compares to the model code.
Sure, I have it up in front of me now, and I was trying to do a comparison as we were as we were listening. For our proposed RMB zone, our FAR maximum is higher than what's in the model code. So we would allow larger buildings. And I was still looking at RMC. There's a range. I think we might be just a little bit lower, maybe by point one. I'll have to check. Something that that I did when I received the, and I'm going to speak to two letters, because we received a letter from Matt Wellner and the Home Builders Association with similar points. But I took those suggestions to heart. I kind of modeled everything on the weekend to kind of see, you know, is there anywhere we can tweak this? And as I was trying to get some of the scenarios to work, the problem I kept coming up with was parking, not FAR. And that I just couldn't fit, no matter how high the FAR was, as soon as we required that parking, it wouldn't allow the 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 building to be that big. And I know we've had extensive conversations about parking, so I'm actually not, I'm not suggesting a change. I'm just letting you know that from a design perspective, parking is my barrier when I'm trying to fit these things on a lot. An exception to that, I think Matt raised specifically duplexes in RMB. That is the one place I could see where there could be a little bump that could have an impact. The the only issue would be that we also have a tree incentive in the code where we're trying to encourage people to save that tree so they get an extra six hundred square feet. So in that case, could we increase FAR by ten percent? Yes. It will make the tree incentive pretty much ineffective, because now people are allowed to max out the whole envelope, and they don't really have a reason to try to get that extra space. But beyond duplexes and RMB, I couldn't find a problem with with making it work. The Home Builders Association asked for twenty percent across the board, and you can actually fit that space in a lot of these designs. It's it's larger than could than what would fit in the envelope. I looked at additional height restrictions, and you know, they do affect a couple of zones, and what it does is sometimes encourage you to move a box within there. If you move right to the property line, then yes, they would, they would encourage you to step back the third story a little bit. But we've also heard from the public that they're very concerned about privacy in rear yards. So we're trying to balance allowing more housing, allowing three-story structures, but then protecting some of the privacy that people have been used to in some of these neighborhoods. That's a lot of information. I could keep going about window coverage, or we can. I've got a slide about window coverage if you're interested in looking at what the different percentages look like, because I know it can be hard to picture.
I would like to see it, especially since it's the time to make it.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. This is window coverage for syphysis odds. Right now, we require fifteen percent, which is what you see on the left. You can put the windows on all three stories, or you can choose to have more privacy on the lower floor and just put them on the upper two. But I wanted you to see what it would look like with twelve percent, ten percent, and five. When people saw the five percent in past conversations, they were not in favor for the most part. But I will add that fifteen percent is the standard, and we have a discretionary process where people can elect to to pursue the twelve percent, so that is possible. And that's the type two application. The type three application doesn't have a metric. It basically allows, you know, the applicant to propose something that that meets goals about connecting to the street.
Thank you, Rob.
Counselor Tibnon.
Thank you. Sorry, two things. The first one on the the glazing part of this, I know that there's, that was a concern that was posed by a developer in terms of like arbitrarily requiring a certain number of windows or glazing. in terms of uh, like arbitrarily requiring a certain number of windows or glazing as it's uh, the terminology is, on the sides of homes might end up really limiting the interior design or layout of the building. Uh, from the reading that I I had before this, um, that came in today, there's an exception that can be made and a process that they can go through to get down to 12% or or less if there's the argument of why. Um, that makes sense to me. Agree with that. I'm curious as to what that process looks like, how onerous it is, how long it takes. Um, like, is this something where someone comes in with a valid argument for why they would need the reduction? And it's a matter of the review, and then it's stamped and it's done. Are there fees attached to it for um, in any pushback that you get from designers that are struggling to figure out how to make um, uh, you know, a a product that that people on the market are gonna wanna buy? Can you talk a little bit about that to, especially for folks that are listening? Um, in terms of, this isn't a one-size-fits-all, so if there are situations where people might need to to have a little bit of flexibility with the rules, what does that look like if they wanna come back and propose something that's outside of these uh, regulations?
Sure, I am going to ask, um, Elena. Would you mind taking that one? Elena is our associate planner who processes more of these type two and type three, so she can uh, walk through the process pretty quickly.
I think you're on mute. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
I I apologize. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, uh, councillors, Mayor Beatty. My name is Elena Sassen. I'm a planner with the City of Beaverton, um, and I will try to speak to the process that um, we're working on for the type two um, application. Uh, for the discretionary path. So there are, there are a couple of options specifically when we're talking about glazing. Um, the type two process is is more onerous than the type one process. Um, there is a notice that goes out to property owners within the vicinity of the site. Um, and it does take uh, potentially longer. Um, we're really working through what the type one process would look like for middle housing, so it's it's a little difficult to compare exactly, but the code is more prescriptive in terms of um, a noticing requirement and um, and when a decision has to be issued. Typically, right now, for a type two, we look at about two to three months uh, prior to a decision being issued. But that may be uh, slightly less or a little different for the middle housing land division, or not land division, excuse me, middle housing design review applications. Um, and the fee, as I believe you had a question, um, the fee would be higher as well for for the type two. Um, but it gives them a little bit more flexibility in terms of what they they wanna, what they would like to propose.
Okay, um, thank you for that. And and the other question that I had was in regards to, I believe, my name was Karen, who had um, phoned in about living in a cul-de-sac and the impacts that multiple car users can have on a constrained environment like that. Um, I I can see that playing out and it being a real issue of quality of life and safety for people that that live in areas where an increased number of cars could really, really jam things up. So how prescriptive can we get with the code in terms of maybe like looking granularly within the areas of like, this is not gonna be, um, you know, a viable place to put this in? Do we have any mechanism where we could potentially black places out on the map to say? Um, you know, multi- multifamily is not gonna work in this location. Is there, is there any mechanism that we're considering for that? Or is it just gonna be a free-for-all for where these get built?
Elena, would you mind talking about the um, infrastructure review when we, when we get to applications, what the process will be?
Sure. So um, again, we're working on the process kind of as we, as we speak with with all the details, but the idea is that even though these are gonna be subject to a type one application, generally, that's the default. Um, we will have, we will have staff from different divisions, from transportation, from site development, so utilities and um, public works and building, all reviewing the the plans. And during that process, that's where we would evaluate whether the site can actually accommodate the proposed development, whether this, there's sufficient infrastructure, like water, other kinds of services, um, whether or not, you know, if there are parking requirements, if those can be accommodated on site. Um, all of the standards will will dictate whether or not a certain type of development um, is feasible on any given site. I don't think without having a particular proposal in front of us, we can really blackout certain areas. Um, it's, it's just a matter of somebody proposing something and then working through um, all of the requirements with with that proposal in mind.
Okay, thank you.
Is that the end of your questions, councillor Tibnon? Perfect. Councillor Sansoussi?
Yeah, um, first of all, just to to get to this, this uh, cons- concern about the possibility of apartment buildings showing up in today's, you know, sort of more generous residential districts. I I don't read that into this code at all, that that, you know, RMB and RMC, which are the somewhat lower density of the of the zones that we're talking about, uh, wouldn't allow construction of multifamily apartment buildings, would it?
Um, it doesn't allow more than four units that are attached. I mean, the quadplex, and then it would allow townhouses, um, but you know, people don't think of those as, um, you know, apartments, but apartments is a fuzzy word, so I wanna be clear about the number of units that would be allowed.
Yeah, yeah. So it's duplex, triplex, quadplex, and townhouses that we're talking about.
Yeah, and cottage clusters, but those are detached.
Yeah, and that's potentially being introduced, and it's only in in places where somebody, you know, finds an opportunity to do that, meaning open land, or they purchased properties and and assemble them or so on. So the risk there is actually quite modest. It's really more the the high-density residential zone and the RMA where there's more likely to be some introduction of of some of the denser types of of housing. Um, on the window coverage thing, um, that one of the, one of the interesting ironies about this is that um, th- this is my house. My house lives somewhere between 5% and 10% here on both sides. Uh, you know, it's a, it's a front of the house has windows, the back of the house has windows, the sides not so much. And in this neighborhood, there there are quite a few of these that are fronting on streets, where the 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 side of the house faces to to a street, so um, this is one of those wrinkles that that affects the potential buildability of things that are already here in the city. And that's, that's always the case that I worry about, is where the a new regulation that's meant to make more opportunities available takes away the opportunity to do some things that that have already been been built. Um, and and are one thinks successful. So that's why I was actually uh, sort of in intrigued when uh, Mr. Wellner contacted me and sent his letter in, because, well, we've known each other for for a while, and there's a long history there. I'll be happy to share if people really wanna know it. Um, but he had a hand in in the the ultimate construction of the neighborhood that I live in right now. Um, and and we worked together on the Washington County Planning Commission, so we understand how each other reads code. Now, I'm very grateful that he read the code, because the it, some of the issues that he's raised are ones that I've been raising all along through this process. Could you build my neighborhood again? And so I got a little bit concerned when he was saying that there were aspects of this neighborhood that I live in today that wouldn't be possible under the new code. Now, I think, Rob, you may have convinced me that most of those issues, not all of them, can be, would be addressed fairly in a fair- fairly straightforward manner in either our high-density residential zone or in our RMA zone under the new, the new provisions. So that makes me comfortable. I'm not sure we've satisfied all the height issues, the FARs. Um, and I'm not sure that the slopeback business works in all cases, and maybe we wanna consider whether that slopeback requirement, the extra 10 feet of setback, um, is appropriate for the RMA and high-density residential zones, or if it should be restricted only to R and B and RMC. So some things like that. Now, I I'm I'm gonna wind down to a close here. Um, I I do think that it's important that we get this code in place for, um, you know, but before the the uh, the standard state code goes into effect. But I'm I'm really uncomfortable about the possibility that we have really missed a few things. Um, and I I don't think I feel competent to uh, write uh, motions to amend this development code uh, at at with quite the same comfort that I did when I was a planning commissioner uh, on the fly during a meeting like this. So what I'm wondering is, uh, and this is more a question from Ms. Tweedy and and our city manager, can we commit? Um, should the council approve this this evening with some amendments that we'll discuss? Can we commit to sitting down with some of the folks who who've given us very specific numerical recommendations? And start working on whether or not changes are needed quickly to this code in order to allow important options to be achievable in Beaverton? Uh, if if we can make that commitment to work with um, some of the folks who have submitted some testimony here in order to figure out how to accomplish what needs to be accomplished, um, I could see moving this forward on the emergency basis that we're trying to do tonight. Um, real quickly, I support the revisions one through eight and exhibit 11. I support the uh, two land use uh, areas as opposed to the three land use areas described in exhibit 13. I think we still have a little bit of talking to do about this glazing and FAR stuff. Thank you.
Hey, uh, councillor Sun, I'm gonna let this community member talk. It's a little out of the ordinary, but she came in um, during public comment uh, earlier, and I asked her to return, so do you mind? Okay, Cheryl, yeah. Cheryl, thank you for coming back. Um, so we're gonna go ahead and let you, it's past public comment, but since I asked you to come back, uh, let's give you three minutes to address the council.
Great. Well, I, uh, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Sorry, my hand was down, and then when you're like, okay, next, and I'm like, okay, sorry, I should have kept it up. Um, so I actually sent a letter as well for your review regarding the Housing Options Project. Um, and I'll just read it to you quickly. Dear council members, I would like to request that Murray Hill Owners Association land, this includes 25 recorded Murray Hill Platts, be removed from Beaverton City's rezoning plan. The association land already complies with the higher-density housing goals desired by the recent Oregon State Legislature House Bill 2001. This is exemplified by the increased residential density compared to the Cooper Mountain Community Plan Alternative A presented in February to Beaverton residents. Murray Hill Owners Association land encompasses 379 acres and was developed from 1986 to 1992. On 318 acres, there are 1,458 single and multifamily units. Less than half of these, that's 702, were built as single-family residences, including 14 townhomes. True single-family residences only number 688. The majority of the association residences are apartment units numbering 740, not 756. The association land also includes 16 acres of commercial development, the Murray Hill Marketplace, Chase Bank, a Child's Place, and three businesses of the Murray Shoals complex bordering a four-acre Murray Hill Lake. An additional 31 acres are natural habitat resource areas, and approximately 10 acres are landscape common properties. In comparison, the Cooper Mountain Alternative A presented to citizens outlines 3,760 residential units on 1,232 acres. The units per acre is 3.05. The Murray Hill Owners Association housing density is significantly greater at 3.84 units per acre. This higher density is closer to the Cooper Mountain Plan Alternative B, including 5,000 residences with 4.06 units per acre. As evident with these numbers, the Murray Hill Owner Association development was built with goals and standards ahead of its time and fulfills Oregon State HB 2001's intent. The association already has a nice mix of single-family, multifamily, and commercial properties. Moreover, it has significant acres of natural habitat for citizens and wildlife to enjoy. With this goal accomplished, the Murray Hill Owners Association requests the Beaverton City Council to exclude the association land from rezoning changes as it already embraces the goals of HB 2001. Thank you.
Is there any questions for Cheryl from the council? See, and thank you for joining us this evening.
Actually, I have one, one thing that um, came to mind. Uh, thank you. So I live near that that, the area that the speaker was talking about. And it does have one thing that works for it in a way that I haven't heard mentioned much at all in in these conversations, which is a commercial district and the ability to quickly get to services such as eye care, a gym, a grocery store, a gas station, uh, and and in in some fast food options and things like that. Um, this, this concept of missing middle housing is is really, really important. Um, it, you know, I think it dates back to like 2010, and an architect at Octakos who came up with this concept of this whole missing middle of types of housing, and that it's all about walkability. It's about being able to age in place. Um, but at the center of all of that is that it's also um, units above retail and corner stores and things that actually allow you to walk to them to to have some sort of good or service. So it's just a big takeaway from from the comments made just now is that uh, that area is a good example of of what we're trying to achieve, of getting a lot of housing in there, but in a way that doesn't uh, impact people's ability to get around and get to the stuff that they need to get to, and hopefully do a lot of that without having a car. So um, I, as we're having these conversations, I think it's gonna keep coming back to parking um, and and serious concerns about that, because the commercial districts just don't seem to be plugged in in the thinking of of as we're putting in all this density and all these types of of um, needed housing for different households at different times in their life, uh, we're also not factoring that into. So there's not an ask attached to that. It's just a a comment that's like a glaring flashing yellow light in my head that this is, this is potentially a problem down the road, so hopefully we can get this cleared up uh, before we adopt this around parking.
Thank you. Councillor Hessen?
Yeah, so I'm gonna make a couple of comments, um, and hopefully help us move forward. I wanna take a moment, like, acknowledge everyone who gave public testimony. Um, you know, we too got a public notice, and what we read it, and we're like, what's this about? And candidly, like, I know, because I sit here, but it did feel like, do we understand this? Do we know what's happening? And so I'd like to just, at some point, talk, not today, but like, what does public noticing look like in our community? How are we doing it in a way that's accessible so that communities understand it? How are we making language as accessible as possible so that people can understand it? So for those folks who testified, like, super appreciate you and understand what you're feeling. Um, I do think that staff did a really great job at at engaging for this last couple of years. Um, I can't tell you how many presentations I've had the privilege of hearing from this group around this, and I know how hard some of these decisions have been. Um, and I do think that there were some good comments that were brought to us via public comment. Um, but listening to Rob talk about the parking made me feel like we do have a really great I I think we have a really great foundation in front of us, um, and I'm I'm comfortable moving forward with with the way that it is the right now. Um, given councillor Sansoussi's comments, which is that there is some sort of commitment for us to potentially discuss open items. I do, my gut says that the open items staff has probably addressed, and so I feel okay. Um, there's another lingering conversation that councillor Tibnon is bringing up, which I remember, like, noting, which is parking and congestion, which is why we wanted to have parking uh, like, uh, credits is the name, right? Because we were thinking about, you know, this idea of what congestion and what neighborhoods look like, and so while this housing, like, this develops the foundation of like, how we're gonna allow housing to happen, I do think from an application process and from like an infrastructure process, and like, our, you know, CDD friends really need to think about, you know, how we're um, prioritizing you know, how we're prioritizing different applications, what we're looking for in those applications, what those considerations are for parking, for example, in that cul-de-sac scenario, because we do want to be thoughtful of not hurting our infrastructure in a way that there's cars everywhere and people can't get around and it's not safe for our community. So I I want us to just keep thinking about that. I'm happy to put a pin in it. I do think like, I feel comfortable moving forward with this. I think what counselors, you know, I'm comfortable with what Counselors and Susie said, which is like committing to a couple of open items. I'm also really comfortable moving forward with this, knowing that we have the flexibility to come back and discuss it if if we felt the need to do that.
Any other questions of staff? Okay. So hearing no further questions from the council, the public hearing is now closed. The council may either adopt the proposed ordinance or take other action. If other action is proposed, the motion must include specific direction as to what the other action is. Is there a motion regarding tonight's ordinance?
Madam Mayor, members of council, I will move. And I don't know if we have a, let's see if we have a formal statement here. Pardon me, one moment here. Move that the council adopt the ordinance embodied in Agenda Bill two, two, one, six, three, and ordinance related to the housing options project and amending the comprehensive plan, volume one, chapters one, two, four, five, and appendix two, the zoning map and Beaverton Development Code chapters ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, and ninety, with the inclusion of the recommended amendments from the Planning Commission, revisions one through eight and exhibit eleven, and incorporating the two land use area changes described in exhibit thirteen.
Is there a second?
One second.
Seconded by Counselor Hartmeyer Prigg. All right, what's the discussion on tonight's motion? Counselor Mitchell, kick us off.
Thank you. I was curious if I might have missed it. Was there a commitment from staff to to discuss open items? Or what does that look like?
Ms. Ariyama?
Oh, we certainly can talk and meet, but I'm waiting for Cheryl Tweedy to come on because there is a process that would require a new legislative process with the city meeting, the notice, public our planning commission hearing and then back to council. So it could be another four months plus to get back to council. So I think that's an important context. And if council is fine with that process, we certainly can engage and see where we can get some resolution on some of the matters.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I know that we want to get in line. I'd be curious to hear what Cheryl has to say, but I definitely think that there are times where we really push forward. And we need to, you know, I feel like this is so big, we need to, you know, take a pause for a moment and and have that opportunity to engage at a little deeper level to these very specific requests. Because I think we're all kind of left like questioning a little bit. And so that's, that's just how I feel about this one.
And if staff that's available can respond to my comments, that would be helpful. Thank you.
City manager, mayor and counselor, hi, I'm Brian Martin, long range planning manager. Cheryl, not quite in the meeting. Yeah, staff is happy to meet with developers, real estate industry, other experts to try to better understand some of the issues that have come up in letters. Regarding how long it would take to get back, it would take likely six months at the shortest by the time we have the conversations and do some analysis and then get the legislative process moving. Because of the, you know, the noticing requirements for the takes some, some time. That's a relatively aggressive schedule to get something done in six months. I hope that answers your question.
Counselor Sansusi?
Yeah, I'm I'm sort of thinking back to my old planning commission days, both Beaverton and County, when when, you know, big complicated matters like this would come forward. One at the county that I was involved in was the North Bethany codes, sort of like we're doing for South Cooper Mountain, but it was North, North Bethany. And then we've had a number of things that happened in the two years I was on the planning commission here, where there was a fairly substantial impact to these things. And we granted ourselves in most of those cases, the time to really grind through all the gory details and hear from a lot of people and hear over and over and refine things down. Unfortunately, the state legislature kind of took that away from us when passing HB two thousand and one by setting a deadline. So I have misgivings about not fussing the details on this one. But we don't have the time and we're not the planning commission. The planning commission is where the the super fussing of details really is meant to take place. But, you know, we're just up against the window, a time window here. So what I'm, what I'm looking for is for those people out there in the community who can present specific examples of where this code is causing a problem that that we respond to that with understanding and back and forth and possibly amendments to come forward through through the process. So I'm okay with the six months. The legislature forced us to do do this this way. But thank you for for being willing to have some conversations with people who point out issues with it with this very substantial piece of code that Rob has been working on for like twenty decades now.
I too, you know, for me, there are obviously some pieces of the code that I think potentially in the future might need some revision. But I really want to charge us to not throw the baby out with the bathwater here. We're under a timeline with the state legislature. I don't know why that adage, but it is midnight where I am. So I'm trying to be thoughtful in my response here. We have a question before us tonight, which is we unanimously move this forward together. If one of us votes no, it goes forward to July seventeenth. But I don't know if some of the nuanced questions that some of us have will be answered in that short time window versus the literally tiny pieces of where we're at now. So my hope would be and my plan would be to vote to move this forward and then have some meaningful conversation if there are tweaks in areas of the code that maybe need adjustment. And that's not abnormal for us to do some adjustment in the code. Once we get going and we see it working, we'll see where it's not working. This has been something that's come before us multiple, multiple times. And some of the groups that we have heard from have been in, I watched them in the attendings in a lot of these meetings and hadn't brought up some of these issues until the very last meeting, which makes it challenging for us to adjust under the HB two thousand and one timeline. So I agree. I think there's some pieces of this code that I think might require a little bit more nuanced conversations. I don't think it's a lot of them. And I'd rather pass the code and do an amendment if we come to that point and realize that we actually can't work through some of these things. I think staff's response to the questions have been thoughtful. And I think we have a good piece of stuff here. So I'm pretty comfortable moving forward tonight with the kind of the agreements that we have going forward. With that, Counselor Hassan, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I would say I support, you know, moving this forward for the sake of getting something, you know, out there. I do believe our staffs worked really hard on on putting this together. I do have one question for Counselors and CC. I did mention the two land use designations versus the three and would just love like a one to two minute response so that I can make sure I understand that, understand your rationale for that.
Well, I, for me, it's just, it's simpler and it provides greater flexibility to to staff and to people who own property and want to make higher and better use of it. But I'll let Rob go through what staff believes are the pros and cons.
We often come back to the the preferred approach, which kind of guides a lot of these code developments, and we're trying to balance three themes of flexibility, context, and community. And this kind of ties back to the additional height limitations we're talking about, too. The idea with three land use designations is that it's it's balancing more of flexibility and community because there are implementing zones for each of the designation. And that means, you know, with by getting into the weeds, with three land use designations, there are fewer choices. But with two land use designations, pretty much you could move from RMA to RMB to RMC. And as you, if somebody requested a rezoning, then, and they're in RMC, then they could choose to request RMA, which means they would go from a thirty five foot height limit to a forty foot height limit. Also, RMA does not have additional height limitations. Those are only an RMB and RMC. So that would be a pathway for them to to not address the additional height limitations. But the the flip side is true. Somebody in RMA could also request RMC and then have to deal with, you know, a lower density situation. So I guess, long story short, two land use designations maximizes flexibility, makes it easier to have more choices with rezoning applications.
And and I just want to interject that rezoning applications are not automatic. The the planning commission has a very significant role in this.
I concur to that. Counselor Hassan, did that answer your questions? Okay. Counselor Tivnan?
Yeah, I think I would be comfortable moving this forward with the caveat that we we have a check in at some determined point, whether it's six months from now or a year from now. I think the market's going to be pretty slow to a whole bunch of new starts, given the economic climate that we're in right now. But just to see how it's going, everything from people that are are purchasing empty lots and wanting to build to those that are demoing single family homes to put in multifamily to feedback that we're getting from developers, feedback that we're getting from community members. You know, the the height requirements, I've heard the stories from folks in Portland where a three story building goes in next to a single family home and all of a sudden, all the sunlight is gone from their backyard, their gardens are, you know, no longer viable. And there's real privacy concerns. I think there's a lot of this chatter that we're probably going to be hearing from people in the community as we start to see what what comes of these changes. So if there's a way that we could build in a report back on what the activity is and what the feedback is that we're hearing, I think that would really greatly inform our conversations if we do decide that we need to do any amendments down the road. But get some assurances tonight that 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 expectation will be met at some point in the future, whether it's a half a year or a year from now. Just to help inform our thinking and our responses to this. If we, if we can commit to something like that, then I would feel comfortable moving it forward tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Hartmeyer, break.
Thank you, Mayor. I also feel comfortable moving forward tonight with the commitment that we we look at a couple of the open items that we talked about tonight. One of the pieces of public testimony that we received that hasn't had as much attention tonight was around ownership requirements in our city. And it was talking about things like, you know, that if you're gonna have a rental in the city, you you live in the city or that there's, you know, we have to be protective of our housing stock because it is so limited. We know the only way we can meet our housing needs is to grow up. We don't have room to grow out. So I would really love for us to add to the list of future conversation, something around consideration for short term rentals and ownership requirements. If you do have short term rentals in our city to ensure that, you know, we aren't running into the same problems that we're seeing in big cities like Atlanta, for example. I have no idea, you know, what that looks like for us now, but I want to really be protective of the housing that we have and housing that we're building.
Okay, so here we are. There's a motion on the floor. We've had discussion. Just as a reminder, voting yes requires us or to move this forward, it requires a unanimous vote from the council to operate under the emergency ordinance that we've declared. If a member votes no, it stays over till the nineteenth and we hold the public hearing again. So with that, is there any other questions before the council, before I call the roll? Okay, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Hartmeyer Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell?
Yes.
Counselor Sansusi?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Passes.
All right, thank you. All right, this is the time and place for a second public hearing tonight, which is on an ordinance amending the Beaverton Comprehensive Plan to incorporate the two thousand twenty one Beaverton School District Long Range Planning or Long Range Facility Plan and adopt minor revisions to chapter one. Amendment and procedure element CPA two, zero, two, two, dash, zero, zero, three. I now call to order a public hearing. Before we move into the substance of the hearing, I'll ask the city attorney to cover any preliminary matters.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's hearing will proceed as follows. After the preliminary legal matters, staff will make a presentation. The council will have an opportunity to ask questions. Then the council will hear public testimony. After the council asks any final questions of staff, the hearing will be closed and the council will discuss the proposal and make a decision. With regard to legal matters, I'll explain the criteria the council must use to make its decision tonight. And then I'll ask members of the council if they wish to make any disclosures. The council's decision on this adoption of the ordinance must be based on consideration of, first, the statewide planning goals and the administrative rules adopted under ORS Chapter one ninety seven. Second, applicable federal or state rules or statutes. And third, applicable plans and rules adopted by Metro. And fourth, the city's comprehensive plan and development code. The council may consider any relevant evidence and testimony that it receives. Failure to raise an issue during the city's hearing on this ordinance recludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Any party with standing may appeal the decision of the city council to the state land use board of appeals according to the rules of that board. Persons withstanding include those who submit written comments or present oral comments. Now, with regard to conflicts of interest, do any members of the council wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest? Hearing none? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the ability of any member of the council to participate in this decision? City recorder would let me know if anyone's raising their hand or asking to speak.
There's no one in the audience.
All right. Mayor, it's over to you.
Right back to staff. Ready for the staff presentation?
All right. Okay, can you see my screen and hear my voice?
We can.
Fantastic. Good evening, Mayor and counselors. I'm Aaron Harris, Senior Planner, City of Beaverton, Planning Division. I'm joined tonight by Long Range Planning Manager Brian Martin. My presentation this evening is for Application CPA two thousand twenty two dash, zero, 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 three, Beaverton School District Long Range Facility Plan Update and Chapter One Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This slide provides an overview of the proposal. It includes updates to Comprehensive Plan Chapter Five to adopt the two thousand twenty one Beaverton School District Long Range Facility Plan by reference. It also includes updates to Chapter One to clarify the planning commission's role in the legislative process as a recommendation-making body to the city council. Additional updates would correct existing Scrivener's errors and would allow the Community Development Director to correct Scrivener's errors administratively in the future. This slide provides some background on the proposal. Beaverton School District adopted the Beaverton School District Long Range Facility Plan on May twenty six, two thousand twenty one. ORS one nine five dot one, one, zero requires that the school district adopt the school facility plan. It also requires the city to include the adopted plan as an element of the city's comprehensive plan. The proposed revisions to Chapter Five would update existing references in the Comprehensive Plan, which currently referenced the school district's previously adopted facility plan to instead reflect the recently adopted two thousand twenty one facility plan. Regarding Chapter One updates, the proposed text changes are intended to clarify the procedures and roles of the planning commission and city council. No policy changes are proposed. As previously stated, the proposal also As previously stated, the proposal also includes the correction of existing Scrivener's errors. A new paragraph is proposed at the end of Section one point three, similar to existing language in Beaverton Development Code, Section ten point one hundred, which would allow the director to correct Scrivener's errors administratively in the future. An analysis of the proposed amendment package with proposed new language underlined and proposed deleted language struck through is included in this evening's packet as Exhibit A to the proposed ordinance. A complete clean version of the text is also provided in this evening's packet as Exhibit one point two to the Planning Commission Staff Report. Planning Commission recommends approval of CPA two thousand twenty-two dash zero 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 three to City Council. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on this matter tonight? Okay, there appears to be no members of the public who want to speak on tonight's matter. With that, is there, does any council have any questions for staff or does staff have any further comments or clarification regarding the proposed legislation? All right. Hearing no further questions from the council, the public hearing is now closed. The council may either adopt the proposed ordinance or take other action. If other action is proposed, the motion must include specific direction as to what the other action is. Is there a motion regarding tonight's ordinance?
Madam Mayor, I'll be happy to make the motion. It's been recommended to us. I will move the council adopt the city ordinance embodied in Agenda Bill two-two-one-six-four and ordinance amending the Beaverton Comprehensive Plan to incorporate the two thousand twenty-one Beaverton School District Long Range Facility Plan and adopt minor revisions to Chapter One Amendment and Procedures Element CPA two thousand twenty-two dash zero 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 three with an amendment to Section five dot two to incorporate the Beaverton Active Transportation Plan and make any necessary findings to support that amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Hartmeyer Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell?
Yes.
Counselor Sansusi?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Okay.
The next item in the agenda is a public hearing on resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand twenty-two, making appropriations and determining making and declaring ad Volerex tax levy provided in ORS three one oh dot zero six oh two. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Susan Cole. I'm the Assistant Finance Director for the city. And I also would like to note that, for the record, this public hearing is also to hear comments or questions from the public on the uses of state shared revenue that are embedded in the city's budget. So it's it's a combo public hearing, one for state shared revenue and one for the city's budget. So before the council is the annual adoption of the fiscal year budget for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two through June thirty, two thousand twenty-three. The Budget Committee deliberated on the proposed budget on two evenings, on May nineteenth and May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two, and held public hearings, and they approved the budget as submitted with four amendments that have been incorporated into the resolution for your adoption this evening. Thank you, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff?
Okay. Mr. Kirby has recommended, assuming that we are interested in the staff recommended motion for this, that one of the items in the materials in the packet is being removed, which is item number thirty-eight fourteen. Can you speak to that, please?
That's for the next item, actually. For the supplemental, the the item for this right now is for the annual adopted budget beginning in July. That one.
Please hold my question until later.
Okay. Is there any community members? Okay. There appears to be no members of the public who wish to comment on tonight's matter. So with that, I will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council?
Pardon me, but I I am just a little bit confused because the order in the agenda was to have the supplemental budget taken up after the Comprehensive Plan Update. It is the supplemental budget we're talking about right now, right?
I was responding to the reading of the title of the resolution to be the budget.
Did I jump one? I'm sorry. I'm trying to follow.
And that's fine. Taking it out of order is not a legal problem, but I think it's just created some confusion.
I'm sorry. Do we want to finish this one, or do you want to go back?
You want to continue with this. It's it's not, but we are dealing with, and correct me if I'm wrong, Susan, but this is the resolution adopting the the budget for the fiscal year.
Yes, Resolution four eight zero one, Agenda Item two-two-one-six-six.
Just a quick comment. So we're talking about Resolution four eight zero one, correct?
I was reading in the in the notes that I had from Bill Kirby.
Well, they are flipped in the agenda. We're ahead one, but I just have a comment. So on page, the second page, the Resolution four eight zero one, it says, whereas three hearings by the City of Beaverton Budget Committee, it's actually two hearings, correct?
That would be correct. Two but two budget hearings for the Budget Committee, and then tonight would make the third public hearing.
Oh, got it. Thank you.
Well, in that case, if we're going to do things in the order of the scripts as opposed to the order of the agenda, I move that the council adopt Resolution number four eight zero one, a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year commencing July one, two thousand twenty-two, making appropriations and determining making and declaring ad Valorem tax levy as provided by ORS three ten dot oh six oh sub two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Hartmeyer Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell?
Yes.
Counselor Sansusi?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
And Mayor Beatty?
Yes. Okay, we can take a five-minute break. I need to track. This is why I asked for this document ahead of the meeting, so I probably would have caught that. So let's take a five-minute recess and come back at nine thirty-five.
We're in storm. Then we're done with scripts for the night.
But only about. Generally indicates the order of things, but we'll we'll share this one, because I didn't have enough time to prep it before the meeting. All right, we are back. Right, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on a resolution adopting the supplemental budget for the fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand twenty-one, and making appropriation therefor. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Susan Cole. I'm Assistant Finance Director. Before the council tonight is a supplemental budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, adjusting various appropriation levels within the city's funds to account for unforeseen changes that occur subsequent to the beginning of the fiscal year, which was July first, two thousand twenty-one. In previous years, the second supplemental of the fiscal year was brought forward to the Budget Committee at their last meeting and then adopted by the City Council at that time. With the change in the form of government, budget supplementals subsequent to the annual budget adoption will be brought directly to the City Council for a public hearing and council deliberation. Staff would like to propose a friendly amendment to correct an error. Request item thirty-eight fourteen for seven thousand five hundred dollars should be removed as it is a duplicate to item thirty-eight twenty-seven. Both listed on page twenty-two of Attachment One in your packet, which is for the item is for compensated absences and the reprographics fund. The result is that on page five of Exhibit A, reprographic supplemental budget item drops from eighteen thousand five hundred dollars to eleven thousand dollars even. Thank you, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Sansusi, your question?
Ms. Cole has already explained it. Thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions of staff? Anyone here tonight to address the council? Right, seeing that there are no members of the public, I now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council?
Well, I guess I will have to forego the traditional reading of every line in the supplemental budget that we used to do back in the day. This is probably an improvement over those days. I will move that the council adopt Resolution number four eight zero zero, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for the fiscal year commencing July first two thousand twenty-one and making appropriation therefrom, but excluding request item number three eight one four found on page twenty-two of Attachment One of Exhibit A and authorizing the Finance Director to make the needed corresponding changes to Exhibit A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? And while I would say generally, Council President, you and I tend to view things a lot of the same way. I don't think this is probably an upgrade to it. I believe strongly this is an upgrade to reading this line by line. All right, if there's no other comments, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Hartmeyer Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell?
Yes.
Counselor Sansusi?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
That passes.
Right, and thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on a resolution establishing the sewer and storm charges for the city of Beaverton and repealing Resolution four seven three four. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Tyler Spath, Senior Accountant for the city.
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. As I haven't had the opportunity to present before you, I will take my own introduce myself. As Susan said, my name is Tyler Spath. I'm a senior accountant in the Finance Department. My responsibilities lie for the water, sewer, and storm funds of the city. The resolution before you is to adopt sanitary sewer and stormwater rates and charges beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two. The rate increases proposed are recommended by the Clean Water Services Board. As you know, the city is the billing agent for CWS within our service area. Historically, the city has elected to match the local portion increase to the regional portion increase. For this fiscal year, the city has opted to propose an additional twenty-two cents to the local fixed rate for capital repair and replacement on both sanitary sewer and stormwater. An average customer in the city with a winter water average of eight point one CCF will see their sanitary sewer bill increase from fifty dollars and fifty-two cents per month to fifty-two dollars and seventy cents per month, which adds up to an additional twenty-six dollars and sixteen cents per year for sanitary sewer. Their stormwater bill will increase from eleven dollars and eighty-three cents per month to twelve dollars and forty-six cents per month, which is an additional seven dollars and fifty-six per year. I'm happy to answer any questions to the mayor.
Any questions of Tyler? Counselor Hartmeyer Prigg?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. So is now the appropriate time, or do I wait until we're discussing the motion?
What have you wait until we discuss the discussion portion?
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Is there any public members here to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council?
I will move that the council adopt Resolution number four eight zero two, a resolution establishing the sanitary sewer and stormwater charges for the city of Beaverton and repealing Resolution four seven three four.
Would you like to second?
Second.
Thank God. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Hartmeyer Prigg?
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments to make about this. You know, our council is having to raise utility rates in more than one utility this year, and we've talked about how difficult and how challenging that is to look at the impact to our community. This is real money. And, you know, it's, you see in the aggregate, you think it's not much, but we have plenty of folks who are low income, who are fixed income, that this is real money. They will feel this every month. So I know that in this particular instance, you know, this is part of our partnership, and we don't necessarily, you know, we kind of have to pass on a rate increase because of this being the sewer fee. But I want to let our public know, if you do not know, that there is utility assistance available to you. And if you need help to pay your utility bills, please use that assistance, because I don't want people to be hurting over changes like this. Like, if you are financially unable to pay, that resource is available to you. Council's going to talk further this evening about helping with utilities. So I just want to, like, make that on the record. People should know that there's assistance available. Because oftentimes, like, our hands are tied and we have to approve. Because oftentimes like our hands are tied and we have to approve rate increases for different reasons, but know that there are resources available.
Patrick, are you wanting to talk to us?
Yes, Mayor. I actually was going to pass it on to Susan Cole to kind of explain the two, two funding sources that we have for utility billing assistance. One is, one is what we put it in our own budget for this next fiscal year and the amount that we have available for utility assistance and how that is managed by, I think it's also committee action. And then the potential of receiving an additional funding from Clean Water Services from ARPA funding through the county to Clean Water Services to the city of Beaverton. So Susan, if you could explain that.
Yes. Yes, we have budgeted in fiscal year 23, the upcoming budget that you just approved, $55,000 between water, sewer, and stormwater for our community members. And the community can call our utility billing office or email, and our staff will talk them through how to apply for that aid through community action. So we do contract with them to provide that aid. So that is city funds from our water, sewer, and storm utilities. Additionally, we have been partnering with Clean Water Services for the Washington County ARPA allotment. Washington County has set aside roughly $2 million of their ARPA allotment that they are funneling through Clean Water and then out to the various jurisdictions. And Beaverton is slated to receive roughly $300,000 for designated households in certain census blocks as determined by Clean Water Services. And that agreement will be coming to the mayor and City Council at their June 19th meeting. So we are working with Clean Water on that data. They, Clean Water is the one who determines who's eligible for that based on various criteria within census blocks. And so that's what we are currently doing for financial assistance with the utility bills.
And for average person that doesn't know what census block they live in, just call us. We will help them figure it out and get, we will handle the backend of charging which grant for that. There is utility services for anyone that lives within the city boundaries. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Hartmeyer Prig?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell?
Yes.
Counselor Sansusi?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
That passes.
Okay, all right, we're on a roll tonight. All right, we are on to our action item, Agenda Bill 22168, Discussion Regarding ARPA Trench 2. Ms. Haryama, the floor is yours.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor and Council. I do have a presentation, but in the interest of time, I think I'm just going to summarize it and then happy to answer any questions. As you know, the city of Beaverton was allocated about $17 million in American Rescue Act funds. The council allocated $8.4 million as a part of its tranche one. And that went to both revenue loss and a variety of initiatives, mainly affordable housing and small business relief and recovery. A portion of tranche two, which was approximately 8.4 million dollars, has not yet been received, but we should get that by the end of this month. But was allocated as a part of the budget process for the 2223 budget. Approximately 6 million went to revenue stabilization. And the remaining 2.4 is what I'd like to talk to you this evening about. And I do have a recommendation for your consideration. And it summarized as the following, 2 million for the permanent shelter for tenant improvements, $45,000 for utility assistance, and really what we want to do is prevent water shut offs because we saw a number of folks needing that help through the pandemic, and we know this pandemic is going to continue to support Council Meyer Prig's comment about this, and I'm sure we'll talk about it a little bit more. 155,000 for a continued ARPA administration. We have about 16 different categories of ARPA projects, and within each of those 16 are many activities scheduled. And then another 229,000 as a contingency for things that come up throughout the year, year, and that will give council some flexibility because there are other items that may either need additional funding, or you may have new items that come up because there's a particular community need. So with that, there's some next steps I want to walk you through. One, we're going to come before you in the summer and give you an update on what's happening with those tranche one projects and get really in the detail on that. And then with respect to tranche two this evening, I'd like you to consider the recommendation that I'm giving you to allocate those recommendations. And then if the council is agreeable, I would need a motion to that effect, and we would return through a consent item for a transfer appropriations. It would be in the form of resolution to codify your motion this evening. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haryama. Thank you for the recommendations. I also saw in the email today that you hired someone in your office to help with the administration of ARPA funds, so I I'm excited to see that because I think we need that kind of like internal shepherd to make sure that we're hitting all the goals that we've asked here. I plan to support your request tonight. Thank you for the presentation, Counselor Hassan.
Yeah, thank you so much for this presentation and for the update on ARPA funds. I'm really supportive of this recommendation. It's really important that we're focusing on housing our community, providing utility, financial assistance. I do want to implore council to think about this 229,000. I know I've said it before, I feel like we've kind of, we've done a lot with ARPA money. It's been really amazing. I don't, I want us to start focusing a little bit more on communities of color and how we can support those communities. And so whether it's staff coming back with the recommendation from our cultural inclusion team, whether it's partnering with the diversity advisory board, I know we have this conversation coming later with the multicultural center. I do think that, you know, setting this aside and saying that we care significantly about the communities of color that live here that have come to us and have asked us for some things would say a lot. Obviously, it's contingency. I don't know that it will be there, but on the chance that it is, I'd like to plant the seed that we're thinking about that. And I'd be open to, you know, ultimately, probably, you know, some staff recommendations from the cultural inclusion team and/or folks that are, are a little bit closer to the racial equity work in the city.
Anyone else have any comments? All right, seeing none, I would, oh, sorry, Counselor Hartmeyer Prig?
That's okay. I just wanted to give my formal like thumbs up. Yes, I agree, Counselor Hassan. I think I'm hoping that maybe there's a little extra contingency, you know, I know that we have really planned well for the use of this money, but I would love to hear from the groups that you mentioned, but also would encourage you, like if there's a specific ask, you've heard, right, that like council does get to guide this money. So if there's something that, you know, you're like, you know what, this could be something we could, we could really invest in our community, please bring it to us. Because that's what you're here for, this we're all here for. So I just want to say, I agree.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yeah, I agree with Counsel Hassan and also Ashley that. But also I also add that I would like to use this money to actually do some kind of work, not just go into some kind of infrastructure or anything improvement, but, but something that could be tangible, equitable for not just people of color, but for everybody who's in need that we can somehow help them equitably in what they need. Like last year, all of a sudden we had the heat dome during winter, maybe might get severe winter weather, whatever that might be, that this could be used for actual people and actual for their help. That's what I want to say.
Counselor Mitchell?
Yeah, thanks. I think that that was well said. I support Counselor Kimmy. And that overall picture, I think anything that goes to our community is a win. And so we don't want to discount anything right out of the gate, but it's nice to, to have certain thoughts that start the ball rolling. So I think we're headed in a good direction.
I think the city manager knows as well, which is why she asked to put this in a contingency for us to be able to address at a later time. So thank you for your hard work on this. Anyone else? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass Agenda Bill 22168, ARPA Trench 2 Funding Allocation Recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, we are talked out on this one. Go ahead and call the roll.
Counselor Hartmeyer Prig?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell?
Yes.
Counselor Sansusi?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
And we pass.
All right, on to our three work sessions tonight. So we have an hour and a half allocated for the rest of the meeting. It is really late for me and late for you guys. So I just want to encourage staff to like be concise tonight. I know Jeff that you can speak about water for hours, but let's think about moving things along. All right, Agenda Bill 22169, Clean Water Services Intergovernmental Agreement Negotiation Priorities. I'm not sure who's kicking us off. Sia, is that you?
Yes, that's me. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This is Celia Lindstrom with City Managers Office. I will keep my intro remarks very brief so that we can turn it over to Jeff to walk us through the CWS negotiation priorities. So we are here today to talk about the Clean Water Services renegotiation, specifically about the priorities for that renegotiation. As background for folks who haven't been part of this conversation to date, the city and Clean Water have been coordinating sewer and stormwater since 1989 and a formal agreement in place since 2004. So last year, council gave direction to staff to notify Clean Water of our intent to reevaluate and renegotiate the terms of our current master services IGA. So we're here tonight to receive feedback from you on the four priority areas that have been identified for the negotiation. We are scheduled to begin in-depth negotiation with Clean Water Services on July 13th. With that, I will turn it over to Jeff to give us a very high level and brief overview of those four areas for priorities. Jeff, all you.
Thank you, Sia. Yes, brief. Okay. So in late April, we held our council 101s to introduce our negotiation priorities, and they're grouping into one of four primary categories or buckets, along with a prioritization ranking of a one to a three for each topic. Over the next few slides, I'll be giving a quick recap of those categories for you. The first is a memorialization of operations and maintenance practices. This division of roles and responsibilities helps bring clarity for our operations staff, and it sets the basis for the services provided by each agency. That division is also used when evaluating the split of the revenue from our rates and charges. The second grouping is our, the clarification of operating procedures. Staff have regular interactions with CWS as part of the development review process, development of standards. And during our day-to-day operations and maintenance, clarifying the operating procedures help us, helps us to streamline these processes. So we can provide better services to our residents and customers. However, there are times when staff and agency are not in agreement on a procedure. So we also want to make sure we develop a formal process for appeals so we can raise issues to a management level or a policy level for review and decision-making. Our third bucket is focused on the development of engineering, or the focus on development and engineering standards. As the holder of our stormwater and sewer discharge permits with Oregon DEQ, CWS has a role of setting many of our standards related to site development and redevelopment, as well as construction standards. The city has a role in the development of these standards, but the overall goal in these negotiations is to maintain local control of the development process so we can balance these standards against other city regulations and policies for land use, transportation, et cetera. That way, staff can work toward meeting the various goals and priorities set by the City Council. And our final grouping of priorities is around the distribution of the rates and charges between the city and Clean Water Services. The city is looking for a more equitable share of decisive development charges and monthly storm and sewer rates that properly reflects the vision of operations and maintenance responsibilities, funds for expansion of our local infrastructure, and properly compensates the city for services we provide like monthly utility billing. So to wrap it up, we have the four buckets, memorialization of operating maintenance practices, clarifying operating procedures, development and engineering standards, and the rates and charges. And then we have three questions for consideration and discussion by the council tonight. First, are there any topics you'd like additional information on as we continue to move forward on these negotiations? Our current schedule shows our discussions going through December for reference. Second, are there any negotiation topics not included in our list that council would like the staff to pursue? And finally, staff has assigned priority rankings for each of the topics to highlight what is most important for the city in these negotiations. If any of these topics was not given a priority ranking of one that council thinks staff should prioritize, we'd like to hear that too. So with that, thank you. I'll leave this last slide up for the discussion, but if you prefer me to stop sharing, just let me know.
Thank you. I think leaving it up is helpful for council to frame their thoughts for you. I do appreciate the, the logical flow and the questions. The only really question or comment I have is I don't think, and maybe it's intentional in the SDC language, it's strong enough. I believe strongly our partners need to help us in addressing affordable housing. Part of the reason affordable housing is out of the reach for builders to build is the astronomically high SDC fees that attach to it. And I'm old enough to remember when we addressed this with THPRD, and it caused an entire shift in their board to address this question. So I think it is incredibly important with our partners that they agree to help us in affordable housing with some kind of SDC waiver or credit. And so that is a top priority for me out of this negotiation. Counselor President?
Yeah, I don't have a specific topic or a specific priority that I want to call attention to, but just sort of a perspective that I think is is important for us to bring to this conversation and to any other similar conversations that we have, which is that the, you know, cities have independent identity, cities have, have distinct needs and distinct requirements. And Clean Water Services is a county-wide service agency, looks at things differently. And I think it's really important that we not have these discussions with Clean Water Services or any other entity that we interact with on a regular basis as supplicants. We are, we are trying to determine our own fate. We're trying to determine our own path. We have to participate in a, in a regional scheme for stormwater and sewer management. Totally get that. But when it comes to things happening in our city, this is going to be a theme for me over the final two and a half months here. When it comes to things happening in our city, we need to be the primary determinant of how things get done in our city. As long as they're not inconsistent with the requirements and the needs of, of regional systems. So I, I think, you know, by the way, I agree with the mayor. That's a really important point. But I think that this, this thought about downtown development and how it has to be different for us than it is for, you know, countywide. You can't, you can't paint the county with one brush. And I don't think Clean Water Service is really trying to do that, but maybe they don't think about it as hard as we do. So I think if we just keep projecting, you know, here is what we need to accomplish as a city in order to be a better city. How do we make that work with you folks? I think that, that's the attitude and the perspective that I think is always useful to bring into these conversations. Thank you for taking them forward.
Counselor Hartmeyer Prig?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff and Sia for coming and being with us here this late. I just really want to reiterate Mayor Beatty's point about SDCs, and I think, you know, utilizing our partnerships to accomplish our goals in housing and affordable housing is really key. So I would just add my support to that request.
Counselor Mitchell?
I support the mayor and what Counselor Sansusi said, and I think that, you know, thanks for all your work. I think we're, we're doing great on this.
All right, Sia, do you have from everything you need from the council this evening? Sounds good. Go win us some money and some SDC waivers. Super easy. Thank you. Okay, we are on to Agenda Bill 22170, Multicultural Center. I know we have Alexis Ball and it appears to Megan Cohen. Anyone else joining us from your team, please introduce themselves. And Cece is back for a second meeting tonight, so the floor is yours.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Let's go back to my first slide. All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Counselors. I'm Alexis Ball, Equity and Inclusion Manager with the city, and I'm joined by Cece Ritter, Public Engagement Division Manager for this presentation. Megan actually won't be joining for this, for this topic. We're here to present to you some background information on the multicultural center concept and help set the stage for your deeper conversation on next steps. Before we dive into background information, I wanted to offer just a few points of context that I think about related to this conversation happening. related to this conversation happening right now. I personally just passed my eight-year anniversary at the city as a staff member. And though this idea has been prominent in my world and my conversation since I began here, I believe this is the first dedicated conversation that city council has had on the subject since I've been here. If there's one thing that I've heard most consistently in my time in the cultural inclusion program and doing specialized outreach with communities of color and immigrants and refugees, it is the need for dedicated multicultural spaces in Beaverton and the lack thereof. Spaces where people can celebrate, can gather and organize in ways that feel familiar, feel specific to their communities, and where they can build trust and feel belonging and be and share their whole selves and cultures. It's also, I think, important to acknowledge that the city intentionally became a nationally welcoming city in 2015. And in doing so, we took a visible step towards recognizing the diversity of our community and the strengths that that brings, as well as really affirming our desire to be a responsive city and one that promotes immigrant and refugee integration. I also just want to recognize that part of the context of the multicultural center concept right now is the fact that some of the key public spaces that the city used to offer and were heavily used by cultural groups for gatherings are no longer available. So the former Beaverton Activity Center, where the Public Safety Center sits now, and also the Beaverton Community Center, which is currently used primarily for shelter services, are no longer available for the public. The city recorder used to process literally thousands of reservations per year, many of those for cultural groups. So huge kudos to Kathy and her team for that essential service and just recognizing that those spaces are no longer available. I also just want to say that coming out of COVID, of course, we've been or into a different phase of COVID, I should say, we've been reminded of the ever-present gap between government and the most vulnerable communities and the impacts of that in a global emergency and the disproportionate impact of the pandemic on BIPOC communities. And so the Diversity Advisory Board has brought this up in the last couple of years as well. And then finally, our pandemic, the pandemic relief funding that you all have worked so hard to allocate in meaningful ways I think gives an important opportunity for you all to decide to dedicate some new funding to this concept. So it's exciting to be having this conversation tonight. I'm going to flash up here just some community demographics. You've heard some of this cited earlier during visitor comment and in different parts of the meeting. A very significant and growing segment of the population are people of color, immigrants and refugees, English language learners. So just wanted to put up that information updated with the 2020 census data. So diving into the multicultural center concept, the idea for the multicultural community center or MCC, as we sometimes shorten it to, goes back to 2009. And I know some of you were there during these initial conversations through multicultural leadership forums that were convened by the city and then the Diversity Task Force, which, if you're not familiar, was the precursor to the Diversity Advisory Board. And they really identified the multicultural center as a priority idea at that point. And then in 2011, the city invested funds in a feasibility study on the concept to really flesh this out. And in 2015, the concept made it into the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan as one of the eight primary pillars. And the Diversity Advisory Board have been kind of the natural advocates and holders of this idea, proponents of this idea since then from the city's side. Just to touch on some of the past exploratory work by the city, there were a couple. So there's the feasibility study that happened for the multicultural center specifically, and then also some deep outreach on the Proposed Arts and Culture Center at the time. So when we were getting ready, the city was getting ready to do the resur. There was some really robust and targeted community engagement. So I just want to highlight this and say that we're by no means starting from a place of not knowing or not having talked to the community about this concept. There are some examples along the way of some really deep engagement. So just to highlight a few things, the multicultural center feasibility study had all the ingredients of a comprehensive feasibility study. And then in terms of the engagement, they did really in-depth interviews with 25 community-based organizations. They had over 900, or they had around 900 surveys. They did outreach through culturally-specific community liaisons and had respondents from 66 different countries. So again, something that we would consider to be very robust in terms of that reach. And then the outreach on the Arts and Culture Center gathered information on needs also along the way that were sort of outside of the scope of the resur. And they also did, you know, tremendous amount of surveys, interviews, discussions, and reached around 30 different cultural, folks from 30 different cultural and ethnic backgrounds. So wanted to highlight those few things. Some of the key findings from the 2011 feasibility study, I just wanted to pop up here. You all got a copy of the study as an attachment to the Agenda Bill. But some of the findings, over 80% surveyed would use the center, talked about some of the services that the center should provide, really dove in as well around community benefits and impacts, and I think really significant around community unity and cohesion and health and wellness. And then identified some models from around the country that we could learn from and some best practices. So I think those were great. And then on the right-hand side of the screen, you just see some of, a little excerpt from, a couple of different excerpts from there. And so again, echoing that, the dearth of cultural community spaces that people are traveling across the region to be able to find community and have social life to address, that the center could address really practical needs and make it possible for different communities to coordinate and to collaborate and work on shared issues as well. And then finally, I wanted to just call out the fact that we've also, or just acknowledge also that staff across city engagement efforts have heard about related needs and desires in the community. And so you can see on the right-hand side, a list of some of the key documents where references to a multicultural center specifically or the very similar concept appears in written documents. And so there are other places as well, but these were some places we could pretty easily identify where we've heard these themes come up over and over. And while some of the specifics are different from place to place, I think there are quite a few common themes in what's being asked for. So I think it's, what I hear really resoundingly is a place to gather, organize, share culture, celebrate, and find resources. With that, I will turn it over to Cece to continue the presentation.
Thanks, Alexis. So, community organizing and advocacy. So a few things that have happened in the past as well. The Diversity Advisory Board included the concept in both versions of the DEI plan. There were feedback sessions on the Art Center, and we mentioned that already, and advocated for the distinct needs for an MCC. There was a letter to city council on April 2021 where they outlined some of their recommendations for the ARPA money, and that included something with the multicultural center. The priority area for the 2022 Board Advocacy for the DAB. It is one of their focus for this year. Wake Up Beaverton, also, we need to mention that group created conceptual and architectural plans. They identified a potential location, expressed interest in partnering with the city. And they did have conversations with dozens of organizations. So that information is also something that we have. And then other community organizations. We've talked a lot to lots of community organizations, lots of CBOs. We've, a lot of those groups have reached out to staff to express their interest in being part of future efforts. And so we're also trying to bring those folks along as well. So there is a potential opportunity for the use of ARPA funds. You have allocated in tranche one some funding. I think that's correct, in tranche one. So one possibility is to review and update the 2011 feasibility study. We know that the facility's master plan is in process. So is that an opportunity? It could be, it's a body of work that's relevant to considering a new facility itself. Could it be wrapped in? Could it be an arm of the study? Possibly. We have a contract with LRS Architects. We could leverage that contract and see what else that they could do. And we have some information from them about what they could do. We have $75,000 in that tranche one that's already allocated for something. So that could be a modified feasibility study update, if that's where you'd like to go. So some of those key questions, because this is really the first time we've spent a lot of deep dive time on this. Some of these questions are really about vision. It's kind of that bigger question first, and what should our role be in this process and concept? What else do you need to know? How can we be helpful? What are next steps? What should we do with that ARPA funding that's been allocated? How should that be used? And what role do you see partner entities playing? And how should staff be engaging with community groups working on these issues? So not little questions, these are big questions. And we may have to continue discussing, but these are some of the things that we thought might rise to the top as places you might want to start. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mayor.
Thank you. While everyone's kind of clearing up their thoughts here. Thank you for bringing this to us. I didn't know council talked about this in the early forming of ARPA money. I think you don't need to convince any of us of the need or the desire to have this. And so I think that is well demonstrated through all of our planning. What I think is worth noting, since my time on council, is the interwoven conversations between the PRCA and this concept. And I think Alexis did a really good job of kind of showing where a lot of these outreaches had happened together. I think there was a false expectation given to a lot of our CBOs that the PRCA would play this kind of dual role, and it would be a cheap place, and they would have part ownership. And we saw this a lot in council where they came and talked to us about it. And we were always really hesitant of that because I understood the outcome would be it'd be too inexpensive of a place that a lot of people could afford to go. We knew in the forming of the PRCA that it was an important value to the council at the time that the average taxpayer of Beaverton not foot a bill for a regional asset. And when we have community members living on the edge, creating a really expensive tax for a building that not everyone's going to use was challenging. And kind of on that same vein, when I look at where a lot of pockets of our immigrant and refugee community live, they're not all within the city. It's in a lot of our unincorporated areas, a lot of Bethany, a lot of Aloha. And this asset would be a welcome place for people to come. And so I'd like us to challenge, and I'll start with your last question first, of who should we be partnering with? Very logical to me that we bring in THPRD into this conversation. They have a footprint nearly twice the size of the city. They're expert in programming space. They're expert in bringing people together. I know their facilities aren't as cheap as people would want them to be. So I think it's worth some conversations with them kind of as we move forward. But they're a really logical partner for us to go. What I think is challenging for me when I think about this particular project is all the community groups that have been talking to me largely over the last six months, it's definitely been a larger concert of people coming, which is exciting. But it doesn't seem that they're always, to me, is the same definition of what a multicultural center is. What I hear from some groups is they want a resource center and a place to go and get resources. And then some group just want a place to have a cheap party with a kitchen. And those two things could often work together, but it makes the building a lot bigger and a lot bigger of a scope. And so for me, what I'm hoping for at the end of this conversation when you come back is a real community definition on what a multicultural center is. Is it a place largely for gathering, for cultural events? Is it a ton of office buildings in which office space where people are coming to get resources? That to me, or maybe it's both, but that's going to be a much larger scale building than I think we had anticipated. And if we truly want to be equitable and we want to make it cheap for people to be in, are we looking at a building that's going to have very little revenue? And so what is it? Is the council going to be paying for the entire building? And so for me, that's a question I think is really important for us to ask. We asked it a lot in the forming of the PRCA. Was this a building for everyone? Was this going to be a free space? Were we going to try to recoup some of the revenue? Because how we go into the next step, the deciding of how to fund a building, that's an important question that I think I need to understand before I agree to build the building. All right, Counselor Hussin?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for this presentation. It was actually very thorough. I do want to make a comment. So I know Mayor Beatty mentioned THPRD as a partner. I love the THPRD. I think they're an excellent organization. As a community organizer who has tried to put on events and worked with the community, you know, I don't know that they're the right people for this work. Just speaking really candidly, I'm not saying that I'm set on that. It's just something my gut, when I heard that, because I've been helping coordinate quite a few events for our community since before I was on council, and it is not easy. What I heard very clearly in this presentation from staff was two things, that the community wants an event space that offers kitchen and that the community wants office space that helps specifically support culturally-specific organizations. So I think we heard those two things really clear. And I think the question now is what is our commitment to getting towards those things? Because that's been very clear, like in all of the documents that I've reviewed for this, that those are the two sort of things. They're not the same. They could be different. They could be two spaces. But there is something to be said for creating an event space with food, especially after attending a wedding a couple nights ago and not having really great food, and for people to go into spaces and to be able to receive social services. My sort of recommendations or future thoughts or future steps are, one, to talk to the Beaverton School District. I know that they passed the bond. I don't know what was decided with Beaverton High School. I don't know if it's a done deal, what they're doing with the new building. I know that they're starting from scratch. So I'm not saying that's the thing, but do they have, do they have a framework for what the new building's going to look like? Is it baked? Is it something that could be a multi-use space? That could be something that our community has been asking us for for 10 years? So that's kind of my first ask. My second ask would be, I think that it's time that we identify an organization or organizations to allocate and/or direct this money to that will help us get closer to this work. I think Wake Up Beaverton could be one of those organizations. I'm also open to opening it up to other organizations. It's not like a do we need it? It's like a how do we do it? I don't think it's a city-owned thing. I don't think it's a city-operated thing. I think our community has come to us and said we'd like to see this. And I think that we need to figure out like how and what we could do to do that. I also think it's our role as elected leaders, like that we've heard this from our community over and over again, and we know the disproportionate impacts of COVID and a lot of what we've seen happen, to work on ways to secure funding for this. I think whether it is, you know, specific grant opportunities and/or other things, like I think that it's time for us to say that we're not going to hold the dollars to make something like this happen. I think we're going to say, hey, Organization X or B or C, or maybe it's Wake Up Beaverton. You know, we believe that you understand and know this community or connected to this community. We want to partner with you on ways to help move this along. I think we're a convener and a facilitator of helping make this happen. But I think this presentation was very clear, like event space with food, office space with culturally-specific organizations. So I think we would be remiss to say that we still don't know what the community needs. I think this presentation was really clear, and I think some of the testimony that we've heard is really clear. I think the question now is what action we're willing to take based on what we've heard. Thank you.
Counselor Tivnan?
Thank you. Yeah, several thoughts here. First of all, I have the privilege of serving as the council liaison to the Diversity Advisory Board and have seen firsthand the excitement surrounding just even the thought of this happening. There's a lot of people in the community that would step up and help in any way they can, which makes me immediately think about the Downtown Equity Strategy conversations that we had last year. And what does true public participation look like in this spectrum from basically none all the way to the community is driving and leading the work? And is this an opportunity for us to work our way down to the other end of the spectrum and kind of invert this and have it truly be a community-driven project? Is something that I think is kind of baked into the name. So I'd love to see that. As far as the long-term vision, I would just like to see something that's very well-attended, very well-cared-for, that's flexible and agile enough that it can, the programming of it can change and shift as our community changes and shifts and grows. I think of the food carts and, you know, this amazing center of gravity that's been created there, that's full of people and full of different types of food offerings with a building that people can go into. I mean, it doesn't have to necessarily be one big building. I think that that's another part of what I'm really curious about is what exactly what exactly do people want with this? And looking at at to Counselor Hussin's comments, looking at the 2011 study, I also noted a world market was mentioned in there. And, you know, there's there's so much potential in this, but to Mayor Beatty's point, the more you add in, the more space you need, the more expensive it gets, and we're living in a time when getting things built is really, really hard. And the one big difference between this and the research is that benefactor, having people on the private side that are willing to step up and 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 make significant contributions to making this happen. So I'd love to see a public-private partnership involved in this and members of our community, long-long-term property owners, families that have been really successful in Beaverton that call this place their home, step up and embrace this and and try and help make it a reality. As far as what we would need to know, I I I have not read the entire feasibility study. I just saw it today. So thank you to Wake Up Beaverton for sending that along earlier. I'll read through it, but any other information that we could get related to the facility master plan, what existing space we have that could potentially be used? Or what what are we going to have to do to get creative, to get something built soon? Because the research took a couple decades from it. It's a, you know, initial idea to the groundbreaking. And my last thoughts on this are that I don't think we have to have it be everything all at once. I think this can be something that iterates and gets improved upon over time and is built on. Doesn't have to be something like the research, which is this gloriously designed, perfectly built building that's probably not going to change or adapt much into the future, just going to be well-cared-for. Maybe this is something where we we start with the heart of it, the kitchen, some gathering space, and we we leave room to build on to that as informed by what the community is telling us that they want. So that's my initial thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hartmeyer, preg.
Thank you. I couldn't help but see some synergy between nonprofit incubator and multicultural center in terms of some of the needs that I see between the original feasibility study, the community input we're seeing, the types of needs we're trying to solve with nonprofit incubator, knowing like the same approach we have to take to housing is we have to grow up and not out. Is I like my kind of vision is there's a multi-story building where there is like truly multicultural things happening within the space, and that can be ground floor is that kitchen and event space. And the floor above can be office space and can can the reason why I see the synergy with the incubator is that like it may be even be the same type of organizers who are in need of both of those things, who are in need of mentorship and enough space and of collaboration and of places together and and, you know, bring their community, bring our community together. So I feel like there's synergy there, and we haven't really talked about that yet. I would maybe in the next conversation, I'd be kind of curious like what my fellow counselors think about that. Just being really smart with what we have. I think it's really disappointing that like something didn't come together between the Arts Center and this, but it just provides us a new opportunity of creating this really vibrant multicultural space. Counselor Tivnan, to your point, we are now over a decade into the ask of the multicultural center, so we have catching up to do to make this happen. I would really love to see the ARPA funding go to an update on the feasibility study. I don't necessarily think it needs to go to the original feasibility partner. Reading through that study over the weekend was like kind of a bummer, because I think four of the five places that were identified are no longer options, right? For for better or for worse, but they are no longer options. And so we know we're kind of like limited in physical space. So that's why I also see like, can we really like maximize the opportunity? And also to Counselor Tivnan's point, I would love for us to find that person in the community or that community, you know, the multiple people in the community and use the PRCA model in terms of like, who is that kind of steering committee? Who is that like entity that we can use as like a fundraising mechanism? And have this be something that as a community, we say this is so important to us, we're going to raise the money together to make it happen. And I do think like it is worth talking to THPRD to continue talking to Wake Up Beaverton BSD. I think that's so great. Like, we just have so many overlapping needs. Unite Oregon for sure, just in terms of the way that they are embedded with community. So I think there's a lot of partners here, which is good and bad. Because it, you know, I don't want to add to our timeline too much, but I do think like I see a vision coming together, and so much of it is just captured in this document here, so I'm really excited about it. And I think I covered all the questions. Thank you.
Counselor Mitchell.
Yeah, I think that the long-term vision for the multicultural concept and the city's role, I think the first thing that I think of is a building that I like the PRCA model, but I don't like that it's not really self-sufficient all the way. You know, the mayor mentioned revenue generation, and I really support that perspective because I think of, you know, earlier on, we were talking about making spaces more accessible for people like via the parent business. And then you have other people in your space where they pay the parent business rent. And so, you know, you have this synergy amongst businesses that allows people who maybe can't have their own business space, still have their, you know, kickoff business. They get to have this space. So for me, I think about, you know, a multi-story building, ground floor activation that helps support the space that that is is the multicultural center. So you could have all these great, you know, businesses that are in there generating revenue that are also part of that multicultural theme in the building, you know? And then you have this space that is supported by this revenue generation and that removes the city from the constant, you know, feeding of money to that. And it gives it a whole different vibe and feel, because I feel like it would be a public partner, private, a private-public partnership. And, you know, I see a lot of different partners being part of that, but I definitely think that THPRD would be a really great partner. But like Counselor Hartmeyer mentioned, there's going to be a lot of partners in something like this. And basically, what I need to know is more focus and just the idea of funding for what what the big picture could look like, even a rough estimate. I don't necessarily think that the the ARPA funding is going to be something that's going to be take us to the place where we need to be, because as we all know, all that space planning, even consulting, all that stuff takes hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so I'm not really sure if ARPA funding is the appropriate source for that. I'm not discounting it, but I'd like to see what that would look like. And then as far as entities, I think I already answered that question earlier, so I took them out. But so those are my thoughts on this. Thanks for the hard work on it.
Thank you, Counselor.
Did you? Did you mention me?
No, Counselor Sanzusi.
I didn't put my name in in the list, so I'll wait till later.
All right, Counselor Kimmy.
Yeah. I think I think Alexis did a wonderful job of explaining the history behind it. I was there from the beginning, from the task force all the way to DAB inception of the concept. I think we are looking maybe a little too big, like building something or 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 physical structure, but it was more of a gathering place and share their food, share their livelihood, plus a resource center where new immigrant or refugee or somebody who comes into town goes to one place and they get resources for school, a Realtor, or how to sign up for programs. All those things could be served at one area. That's what the vision was. And we we have only 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 pro organization I could think of is Wake Up Beaverton so far is that they're willing to work with minimal funding. I know Mayor Beatty talks about incubator, nonprofit incubator, but we already have that organization who has been incubated and willing to work, but just lack of funding. Not that I'm advocating just funding that organization. It's the fact that with a little bit of money, seventy-five thousand dollars is not too much money. But with that money, those nonprofit organizations can actually go to work. I think we've been talking about for the last decade, and we had physical feasibility study, and that we know there's a great demand. I think maybe we can ask some organization to submit a proposal, and we fund it and see how how they start and how how it's receptive to the community. When we started Night Market, I mean, everybody can tell we expected maybe 500 people, then 4,000 people showed up, then we knew there was a demand. But we did something. I think when we when we put the money into work, like a seed money right now, I think then we can see there's a there is a need, there's people who's willing to work and people who's willing to donate or fund it. So so for me, I would like to fund some kind of organization who can actually start the work and then see how, see what it means to, and that's what I want to see.
Counselor Hussin.
I I mean, I like was when I was going to go, it was to say what Counselor Kimmy said, so I'm glad we're on the same wavelength. I mean, I I do think that while I understand why a feasibility study would be nice or doing something with the facilities plan, you know, those are dice things. I think we're at a crossroads, right? Like, our community has come to us. They've asked us for this. It's a decade. It'll take a decade to build. Don't get me wrong. I'm not acting like this is going to happen tomorrow. But I do think that it's worth putting it out there to organizations to say, we're looking to do this. You know, what are some of the things that you think we could do that we need to be doing? I also want to like acknowledge our privilege, right? Like, when the PRCA came along, right, like it was it was people with a lot of money. I mean, there was a benefactor, right? Like, there is privilege attached to that, right? Like, we know that that wealthy people have access to more wealthy people, therefore they can fundraise in different ways. And less wealthy people have less ways to organize and to fundraise accordingly. So I'd like to really push us to say like tonight that we're we're going to ask staff to potentially go back and 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 talk to some folks to see like what what they would suggest. I also, you know, the public-private piece, I think, is 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 big as well in terms of that's the kind of partnership we'd probably need for to help make this happen. I just that, I mean, this kind of investment is the equivalent to a shelter or an incubator, right? Like, we're talking about communities of color that live very much in in the city, right? I was walking Allen yesterday, right, and just looking around me, like Central Beaverton is very diverse. And so by building a place for those communities to get support, get services, whatever, like that's a that's like a the investment in that for those groups, like and I know Mayor Beatty knows, like, we worked with huge number of undocumented communities that lived in Central Beaverton that just needed basic support or services, right? And teachers and doctors and people, right? Like, we just have people kind of come together. And so I think it'd be a really big miss to not say, you know, we know we have a high population of of people of color. We know one in three of our of our folks here live here and need this. And I I really do see this as an investment in in our communities of color in a way that will benefit us, you know, tenfold in terms of economic development, the future. Like, I don't see it just, yes, it's a place to convene, but it's also a place for people to talk about business and talk about ideas. Like, when I got to be at the Refugee Day event yesterday, like I'm not a refugee, but I felt more home in that group of people than I do in other rooms. And that's important for other people to feel and to be able to feel that. And the confidence that comes from being able to be in those spaces and feel like you belong and feel like you have a purpose and to feel like you have a future, those are the things that matter. And so if we invest in in these communities here by saying, yes, this is a space, we're going to build it, we're going to do this work, I I think it says a lot, and I think it's it would be very meaningful to to our community.
Council President.
Yeah, I won't add a lot of words. I I think that what would really benefit this process is to have someone, some entity, some consultant, some partner, somebody, gather perspectives from from people and start to collate them and bring them together into a something that approaches a common perspective, a common view of what this needs to be. It won't be. Everybody has a slightly different take on it. But a study that was done 11 years ago is not fresh. And and you know, the PRCA went through three or four studies before it got to actually get built. I I think I think there's a whole lot of new things that have happened in the city that in the last 11 years, and I think those need to be understood. I don't have a strong opinion about what the best entity is that would that would do this gathering of information. But I, for me, that's that's the first step.
Okay. Alexis, do you have everything you need from council?
No, I don't actually think so. I mean, maybe Jenny can help us synthesize just like a thumbs up on which way which way we're we want to go. So I heard feasibility study, and I heard not feasibility study, so I just want to make sure that we're really clear on where we're going, because we're also holding a shelter. So I want to get really clear on what what you need next.
Yeah, I don't feel like there's great consensus for either one of those. I think there's still a lot of missing questions from the council. What I do know is I think the council is ready to invest, what I've heard, the council is ready to invest this money. There wasn't a great consensus on who. I think we would need a recommendation from staff. This council just two weeks ago was not comfortable directly appointing money to a partner. I would assume they would feel the same way, so. And I think an RFP is would be way out of line for seventy-five thousand dollars. It'd be challenging. So is there a many way? Is there a way to go out to some of the organizations we kind of work with now? And for you guys to bring us back, like best like who we should be working with, because I agree, a lot has changed in 11 years. COVID has happened. The needs of our community is vastly different. No one is saying we don't want this. We're saying we want to make sure we have the right information to make the next choice. So I know Counselor Kimmy.
Yeah, so I just want to make clear that the I think we don't need proposals. I think staff knows everybody in the town anyways. Maybe they can give us some some recommendations that who we can partner up and then fund it seventy-five thousand dollars, and then let them start the work. And then just see, see how it goes. Reason I keep bringing that up is because I know we have Afghani refugees who's been here for a while. The issue is, we 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 announce ourselves as a welcoming city, but when they come, we just say welcome, but there's no resources. It's it's and and then we don't have any an equitable help that we can give, where we can, we can have this kind of organizations. Whoever comes, we can point the point them to go over there, and then they'll get all the resources at one place. It doesn't have to be physical place, as I said before, but we don't have that place where people can go and get the help that they need. So I think it's 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 about time that we should start something. Thank you.
Counselor Hussin.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I mean, I I would like us to support finding an organization via staff recommendation to get the seventy-five thousand dollars. That's where my gut says, you know, I'm happy to entertain what other people have to say. I also want to say, and and I, this is really important, like I know we talk about like leading with racial equity. We talk about wanting to welcome immigrants, refugees, and people of of color. It's our one of our pillars. At the end of the day, like, I think our staff is the closest to, you know, knowing what these communities need. And so I I'd like to maybe empower them to to make some of those decisions. Like, I think this presentation was reflective of what the community has asked and wants. So, you know, I come back to you all, like, I don't know what some of the staff that are on the ground that are working with our community, you know, I mean, I think you, I think you know better. I mean, I I could tell you what I know, but my guess is the themes would be pretty similar. It's it's like what Counselor Kimmy kind of mentioned, right? People are struggling with navigating housing, you know, those kinds of things. So I'd like to empower staff to say like, yeah, we we think these organizations are the are the right ones to do the work or because we know that government, right, is like not necessarily like this all started, because right, like, people didn't feel comfortable walking into that government door, or they're scared, or they don't know, or they or they haven't gotten the answers that they wanted, so they don't want to come into that door. And so I do think that that third party is is really important to helping us kind of get a better idea of what we're looking for.
Counselor Mitchell.
Yeah, I I I agree that there should be an organization involved, but I don't agree with just having staff choose. And I think And I think I've been echoing this for a long time now. You know, our staff, uh, and not UCC or anybody, but I think that there are patterns that continue with the same organizations and the same, and there there's not a lot of lift to other organizations out there that haven't interfaced with our city very often and kind of, to your point, Counselor Hassan, is, you know, pe- people don't want to walk through the government door, and so a lot of people might not know who the government is, right? The the staff members, I think there are a lot of great organizations out there that need to be given the chance. I think it would be nice to have like a a great advertising campaign, nothing too costly, but just that gets it out there, that can have a mini RFP, because we really need to be intentional and not just choose the same people um, over and over again. And I think that this is a great opportunity to get us stepping in the right direction, because clearly, we've had this conversation many different times. We have the same players in the room, the same players that we have in mind, and and we're still kind of stalling out. So I think if we really kind of take a different approach to this, we might be able to get to where we want to be, whether it's a kitchen or resources, whatever it is, we need that stepping off point and getting that great organization involved, but with great intention, that is not just a recommendation from the city because of some history of relationship, it would be nice to know why somebody is deserving because of their passion and not just because they're chosen. And I think that's what I've, what I've been disappointed with in the past is people in our community know that they're the chosen ones, they're the ones who are not even gonna have to raise their hand, they're gonna be allocated money, and guess what? I don't necessarily think that they're doing the best job that they could be, because they already know they're a shoo-in. So I think that this is an opportunity to really give our BIPOC community the ability to raise up and be different. And um, I think it would be really exciting to to really understand why somebody wants to help.
Counselor Hassan.
Um, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Counselor Mitchell, I I would just disagree, like, I want to empower staff on this decision. I think that this staff that's in front of us are the right people to help, because they're significantly more on the ground. I mean, obviously, I don't know what other counselors feel, but it's just my gut says, like, this is the group that knows and that they'd be the best people to kind of help guide us. I think a couple of us have some lived experience or connections, but, you know, I I think I'd like to empower them. I do want to say like something that's really like not big, but I do want to make sure that someone somewhere is having a conversation with the school district, because I don't know enough about the Beaverton High School piece of this. And there's a part of me that wonders if Beaverton High School construction isn't as baked as we think, that there could be some some opportunity there for us as well.
I do know they have a pretty, like a sketched-out plan, and you can't serve alcohol on school campuses. So I think part of what we're trying to do with this resource center has a place for parties and and gatherings. I think that would be a rather large barrier, so I think that's something staff could assess out and ask by going to to the school. But I think what their rules are for community gathering might be a huge imp, uh, a roadblock for this. So what I think, Ms. Harayama, I don't see a clear path of any one direction, but what I think would be a next meaningful for set, and this is reflective to the community, this is what we keep saying, like, the seven of us can't agree on what the next step is. It is, uh, this is a challenging place for us. Could we have staff come back with some recommendations on how to spend the seventy-five thousand? Maybe a couple of community groups, to Counselor Mitchell's point, maybe it's one or two for us to consider, maybe three, so we can make a decision as a council and and where the next steps would be. I, what do you think, Ms. Harayama?
So first of all, this is public money, and so we have procurement rules. And it depends on what you're looking at in terms of professional services. That can be through a partnership or that could be through an RFP process, but seventy-five thousand will trigger something. So we need to know whether it's informal or formal, so that's the first thing. Um, the second is that you have two options, you, I'm hearing a path of partnership, which still would require a process, you um, can't just have staff pick our favorite five, you have to go through a process, because this is public money. Um, the other is that you can use um, LRG, which is, or excuse me, um, LRS, which is the group that we're already um, working with with the Facilities Master Plan, which can look at building needs and phasing, you could expand their scope to be um, updating the the existing study, if that's a route. We can look at both of those options and present you some alternatives of one path versus another. Um, I don't think we're gonna solve it tonight, uh, but I can certainly bring that to you, understanding what rules we're obligated to follow, and then what your options are underneath those rules. And I I think I'm hearing partnership, but I'm hearing we could use an existing process that we have in place, but I'm hearing more partnership from uh, from council. And so we would just need to carve you a path that that checks all the boxes on what we legally need to do. And so we can certainly come back um, and paint that path for you, and you can give us some more direction on it.
I definitely uh, hear the majority of council saying partnership, and what I think is um, great about that is that we can help inform, through partnership, we can help inform, we can have criteria, we can do things. I don't think I heard enough of the council saying, go back to the group that did the, that's doing our facility master planning. I don't know that we're really talking about like the facility master planning at this level. I think there's more structural problems that we're we're trying to address here today, that's what I hear.
Can I see a thumbs up if we all agree, or there's at least four for partnership, and that really gives me a direction to go in? Okay.
Counselor Mitchell, I do see you're in the chat, would you like to, did you have something?
No, thank you. I mean, I think, um, you know, the city manager really pointed out the the procurement rules, and that provided me some comfort.
Okay. Okay, well, we have some direction for you, so please come back. Uh, I do think, though, I would like to, this is an important topic to this council. The fact that we're having this lively conversation is we're all really important, so I would like it to come back in a timely manner. So make sure, I mean, I know you have a little bit of work to do here, but if we can see this in the next couple of weeks again, I think that's what the council's asking us to do.
Okay, um, that that is a tall order, um, so we will have to prioritize and some things will have to come off that we have scheduled for. There's one meeting in July, that's July nineteenth.
Well, let's you and I talk about some of the, on the agenda, so we can make sure this comes back.
Great, thank you for that direction.
Um, with that, friends, I am gonna turn this meeting over to Council President. I have a meeting on behalf of the city in four and a half hours from now, so I need, I need to go. So I'm gonna let Mark uh, continue the rest of tonight's meetings, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Beatty. Um, and Ms. Harayama, I'm gonna ask you the question. Uh, we're at court ten minutes to eleven P M. You have another work session and an executive session. Um, can they fit by eleven-thirty or not? Because um, I frankly, I'm gonna turn my computer off at eleven-thirty.
I think that we could speed through the shelter code if um, staff can just uh, stick to the facts and ask for what type of feedback they um, need from you, and then we, I think we can get through the executive session, I see Bill nodding.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do it.
We'll make it happen.
Well, I'll do the formal introduction, we are here to talk about Agenda Bill two-two-one-seven-one, the Shelter Code Project Draft Preferred Approach. And I'm guessing Jenna Hughes is gonna lead us on this one.
Yes, um, one moment while I share my screen, and I'll make this fast. Um, so, good evening, council members, my name is Jenna Hughes, I'm an associate planner with the Community Development Department. Um, and I'm also joined tonight by Brian Martin and Lena Smith. Um, and I'm here to give you an update on the Shelter Code Project and get your feedback on the draft preferred approach. So I'll um, I'll give a really brief overview of the project and the draft, and then we'll have discussion, the questions I have for you all are, one, should staff proceed with the draft preferred approach as written? Do you have any questions or comments about the draft preferred approach? Do you want to make any changes based on the additional considerations memo included in your packet? And should the, this project be expanded to consider pod or tiny home regulations? So this project is considering where and how uh, different shelters could be allowed, um, including emergency and severe weather shelters, as well as year-round shelters, which are not addressed or defined in our development code. So this project will be proposing changes to our code to create a clear path for allowing shelters in the long term. This is the project timeline, the research and analysis phase was focused on understanding the key issues and opportunities for regulating shelters. Um, Phase Two was focused on considering three different alternatives for how we could, how we could write shelter rules. We received direction on March first to move forward on the draft preferred approach, and after getting feedback from you all, we will finalize the preferred approach and begin drafting proposed code rules um, and hearings, uh, there will be public hearings in the winter. So this is a snapshot of what's included, there, it's also included in your Agenda Bill packet. Um, I'll just briefly go through some of the major sections. Um, City Council identified flexibility as a priority when it comes to shelter siting. So as a result, the draft preferred approach allows shelters by right in all zones. Um, the draft also proposes that shelters follow the same design rules as other buildings in the same zone, so they generally blend into the neighborhood. Um, and there are also some existing requirements for setbacks, which is how far the building is from the property line, as well as buffers like trees or plants in between neighbors, um, which can offer some separation and screening that can help provide privacy and dignity for both shelter guests and neighbors. Um, we also know that most shelters will utilize existing buildings, so for any design rules we have for shelters, they'd only apply if they're making any changes to the site that would require design review. This is the draft process for reviewing shelter applications. If the application meets all clear and objective standards, it will be approved. Um, and this process would apply for all instances when a new shelter is being established, including new construction, or if they're just moving into an existing building. Um, I would like to get your feedback on the public noticing piece. So it is in the draft preferred approach that a notice would be sent to property owners within three hundred feet of the site. Um, the additional considerations memo describes a cou- a couple different approaches we could take. One question is, should the notice come from the city or from the applicant? And second, um, we also heard that we should um, protect the privacy of guesting at domestic violence shelters, so these are exempt from noticing requirements. The question is, should domestic violence shelters be exempt from having to submit a land use application altogether, so there, so there is no public record of the exact address? And the draft uh, preferred approach at present only refers to traditional shelter types, pods or tiny home villages with individual detached structures are a popular alternative to traditional congregate shelters and have come up during past engagement. Staff proposed this as a potential scope addition in the attached memo, and we're seeking seeking council direction on whether to add it to the project. However, since this potential add-on was developed, the Planning Division's workload has increased, and additional state mandates have been passed that will require staff resources in the next twelve months. So staff is recommending we don't add this to the scope at this time, so as not to delay completion of the Shelter Code Project and divert resources from other priority and required projects. So that, um, that concludes staff presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, the questions I have for you all are, should staff proceed with the draft preferred approach as included in your Agenda Bill packet? If you have any questions or comments, do you want to make any changes based on the additional considerations memo? And should this project be expanded to consider pod and tiny home regulations? Thank you.
Great, thank you, Council, Counselor Mitchell.
Yeah, thanks for that information. Um, I do not think that it should be expanded to consider pod and tiny tiny home regulations, because I think that needs to be considerably uh, flushed out, and we have a lot more time to see our regional partners um, partake in this, and so then we can have a better approach, a more experienced um, eye when it comes to developing these, because it will need a lot of considerations. Um, as far as the draft approach, I do have a question, when it was talking about public notice period and then people being given the opportunity to provide, and it was in bold, written statements, so does that mean that if there is a public hearing or anything that people are not gonna be able to call in and give their opinion, because I think that it is very different to read a piece of paper than hear somebody's passion in their voice. So is that not an option when it comes to responding to the public notice?
Correct, and I might have Lena Smith um, correct me if 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 this is wrong, but I believe the procedure is, um, and this is kind of similar for a type two, where um, the public can write comments to written comments to the project planner um, for their consideration, there's no public hearing process uh, an opportunity to give verbal testimony, and Lena, please correct me on that if that's wrong.
Right, um, um, hello, Mayor and City Council, Lena Smith, Associate Planner. So the direction we received was to do just written public notices for the shelter uh, process, so it would follow the type-two procedure, where it's a mail notice that you receive and written comments are submitted. Um, the direction we received was not to require a public hearing for every new shelter proposal.
Who did you receive that direction from?
Was that from um, the Planning Commission? Jenna, sorry.
Um, I don't know if that was a, like, direct quote. Um, I think we just received direction that um, there should be a public notice and opportunity to provide comment. I don't think we got into the details.
Okay.
Um, but Planning Commission was, did support a process that um, did not have a public hearing going to Planning Commission.
Okay, so then my recommendation would be to have a public hearing and to allow for public testimony. Um, this is so, this is such a huge important step for our city to be transparent during things like this, and I think that is number one. So um, regardless of who did or didn't give that direction, um, I know right now, I think that that's very important. The domestic violence shelter, we totally understand, I think we're all on the same page with that. But um, as far as any other placement of any other shelter, we should be able to have that opportunity for our community, so that they can partake and better understand how they can support any situation that comes their way.
Council President, can I, can I just interject?
Please.
Um, Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney, uh, can I just clarify for the, for the planners? And the process does allow for a public hearing if the decision is appealed, correct? So the initial process is for public written comment, but if if for some reason um, the decision is appealed, they will get an opportunity to testify at a public hearing, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct for a type-two, um, it would be appealed, and I believe the request was that the appeals would go directly to City Council.
So I don't know if that, if that helps to to clarify the procedure, so there is always going to be an opportunity for a public hearing if the, if the public wants it, if they make that uh, appeal of the decision.
Thank you for the clarification, Councilwoman Hartmeyer-Pri.
Uh, I I seem to recall that it was us that gave that direction. I was on the end of the spectrum where I said, I don't think we need noticing, this is so important, I want the least amount of barriers to getting shelters approved and in place, and then we had a hearty discussion about notice, and I believe we landed on this type of notice. It was kind of a compromise. Uh, if I recall correctly, that's what I think happened, that council actually gave direction that this was the type of notice. I definitely remember Counselor Sansusi saying that council should be accountable to our residents, to our community on these types of appeals, and that is why we established that particular process. Um, I do think the draft preferred approach is written, we should proceed. I think, I I also had a question about the notice, um, Jenna, when you were talking about, um, or maybe we just covered it in the appeals. Because I also agree, like, I think the domestic violence shelters, like, we obviously want to be particularly careful in handling that, that, you know, survivors of domestic violence are are fleeing harm, so I think that's, that's good. Um, I wrote down just like nos and yeses in my notes, but then the questions changed a little bit, so I have to like refresh my brain. Um, I don't have any other specific questions. I personally would like us to consider pods and tiny homes, but I will respect the request of of staff for us to hold off on that. Um, I understand workload is tight and it's only getting tighter, so. I understand workload is tight and it's only getting tighter. So I, I will support postponing that, but I would love for us to kind of reserve the right to, to. To talk about it again, should it become a viable option for our community that we want to make sure that our code could support something like that.
Thank you, Counselor Hassan.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I mean, I think the draft preferred approach looks great. I did have, there was a comment that you made that we, we public noticed people. Is it, did you say within three hundred feet?
Correct. And that is consistent with the distance that um, we do for other, for other types of notices.
Okay, is, am I just, that just seems so small like to me, but I don't know if I'm just miss. Underthinking.
Um, for type twos, it's within three hundred feet. And then for type threes, it's within five hundred feet.
Okay, okay. That's fine. Um, I would say though, I, I don't know, Counselor Hartmire Pre, I don't think that staff is against expanding to consider. I think um, Counselor Mitchell just didn't support it. So I, I would support. Expanding the, the project to um, consider pot and tiny home regulations if, if that is something that y'all have capacity to do. That's all.
Councilor Tibnon.
Thank you. Yeah, I was, I remember the conversation. We were actually in person, could see each other for it, which is so helpful. Especially conversations like this. Um, and, and not to have them at eleven o'clock at night. That, uh, so all that being said, I, I, I really. Think that, that we should not. We should not go down the path of thinking. We have to force this on our communities because they cannot be trusted to be a part of the process and give their feedback. Um, I, I know that there's. All kinds of conversations happening around NIMBYism and that uh, it, it's just a fool's errand to think that people can get behind something. Like a shelter. Um, I, I think that we have to push back against those kinds of um, tropes and, and, and really get to something that is. Right for our community. So I am very in favor of doing public hearings. But I hear, hear that. That, that might not be the consensus across the entire council. I, it. I like that we have the, the appeal process, but I also know from having gone through it. Um, now on council, that's talk about onerous. That's a very. Big lift, both for city staff, for Planning Commission, for council. To, to, and the city attorney's office. And it, that's, it's expensive and. I imagine they'll all be appealed. I think we'll have to have these conversations whether we like to or not. So I'd rather do it at the front end and allow our, our residents to. Um, play a part in that. Um. But if, if we, if, and I'm probably going to vote that way. Um. But I also know in the next steps, we have. A, a public engagement and we've got public hearings. So. Probably be hearing from people during that before we can even approve this. So I'm very, very curious. We've been talking about it a lot together. Um, I'm, I'm curious what, what folks are going to say when we present them. With the draft approach. So those are my comments.
Okay, I'll throw, I'll throw a few in. Uh, obviously wait on the pod and tiny home work, although I think there, there could be a future for those things in Beaverton. I think most of the draft preferred approach is, is just fine. Uh, the notice, notice is a challenging one. Having gone through the process of appealing a type two decision here in the city of Beaverton myself, I can tell you it's not expensive, but it takes as much time as you want to put into it. And. Uh, and if you want to have a chance of winning, you probably need to bring some additional resources. And so your costs do go up. Uh, but at the same time. You know, I, I still just don't feel like this is one of those things that we need to put. Uh, additional hurdles in front of, you know, the typical way you would do that is by making this a conditional use and that would force it to be a public hearing and a planning commission meeting in order to get one look, get one place there. You know, I, I just, I just find it hard to believe that there are going to be very many of these. And uh, the, the path to uh, appeal is pretty direct. Um, and it's to the city council, you know, and so the council will be the ones hearing the arguments if somebody finds it um, objectionable in some dimension. So. Um, I'm, I'm fine with it as currently being um, proposed, but. You know, so far we've, we've had four voices speak up, so. Uh, Counselor Kimmy.
Yeah, so um, I concur uh, for number four that we should postpone or uh, uh, hold on the. Pod and tiny homes for now. I'm also, um, I'm open to hearing. But I, but as long as they have an option to um, appeal and we get to hear um, one form or the other, um. Um, I'm all about open transparency and hearing uh, our residents' voices. So either way, um. I, I'm going to agree with it, uh, except number four, I guess.
Okay, Ms. Hughes or any of the others listening in from staff, um, are there further clarifications you want from any of us at this fine hour of the day?
Yeah, are there any thoughts on whether the notice should come from the city or from the applicant?
I think it should come from the city. You know, uh, uh, the buck stops with us. On this. So that's my opinion.
I agree. I agree. Yeah, I also agree. That was the question that I couldn't remember that you asked us, Jenna. So thank you for bringing it up.
Okay, I think you've got a, a majority in favor there.
Uh, Council President Sansu See, um, on the way out, I just wanted to. Um, note that the standards in the preferred approach um, don't involve discretion uh, for the most part. So if there is a public hearing. Uh, on standards that don't have any discretion. Folks can testify, but if it beats the, if it beats the standards, it's still going to get approved. Um, but I think what, I think what the uh, what we'll do is bring some options. Uh, when we come back later, so we can see the difference and we can explore those pros and cons.
But, but you, uh, Brian, you're talking about um, a, a public hearing. What, what we're talking about is an appeal at council.
Well, I was, I was trying to figure out if folks wanted the public hearing at the beginning or just for the appeal. And then I thought I was hearing they want. Of, of council wanted at the beginning with the first review, which is, which is right now a staff review.
Well, I, I, I think what I was hearing is, is for, four of the six of us who are here at the moment. Um, leaning towards supporting the type two process. With appeal at council. And that would be no public hearing upfront.
Okay, thank you.
But the, the appeal at council is a completely different matter. Council can make whatever decision council wants to make. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, I have to call up a magic, magic language. Um, thank you to everybody who has been staying up with us this late. Um, we're going to retire now into executive session. Um, but before I do that, I have to call for council new business. Does anyone care to raise any new business at this fine hour of the day? I think I once brought up mayor salary, uh, something after ten P M one time. That was pretty nasty of me. With that, we will move into executive session in accordance with O R S one nine two dot six six oh sub two sub F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Pursuant to O R S one nine two dot six six oh sub four. It is the city council's requirement. That the items discussed not be disclosed by media representatives or others. No action is expected following the executive session, which means that we are going to terminate this Zoom meeting. And those of us who are entitled to be in the executive session can use the other link. We'll see you there shortly. Thanks, everybody.